Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is June 11th, 2007. And tonight, City Council has quite a full agenda of committee meetings. The first one is going to be the City Services Committee. And the 20-minute allocation starts now. As you see, the yellow light come on over there. Try to wrap her up. And then we will go into the next committee meeting. Chair Nancy Bane.
Okay, so we have two issues that concern the noise ordinance. One of those is a very loud compressor in this chamber, as well as another one at the East Elementary School. And the one at East Elementary School, we may be able to address with a change that Gary recommended. Those of you that read your email know that Palo Alto has a very in-depth and specific noise ordinance. And it's a very upscale neighborhood, so how can they be wrong? In any case, what they suggest is, Gary suggested is that we would incorporate 91003 into our ordinance. No person shall produce or suffer or allowed to be produced by any machine animal or device or any combination of those on a residential property at noise level more than six decibels above the local ambient at any point. And then there's some additional things about likewise the same thing on, no person shall suffer or allowed to be produced, and so on and so forth. And they talk about walls, ceilings, and other properties. I have a constituent, may actually be in the fourth ward, we don't care, we're trying to solve the problem, who is very concerned about the compressor at an elementary school. And so, I would like to talk to the judge about this, tell him what's going on, and then bring it up as an amendment to the noise ordinance, that the residential property should not be day or night subjected to the loud noise of a mechanical device.
What about short-term construction-type items going on?
I do believe that our ordinance has an exception for that purpose.
Very good.
This would be something that runs quite a bit of time.
An ongoing issue.
An ongoing issue. Yes.
Could you explain a little more about what is specific, the compressor? This is all totally new to me.
Totally new to you, okay. Well, I've been receiving many emails from some residents on Morris Avenue who say that an HVAC unit at a nearby facility is a culprit, that they're being subjected with open windows to noise day and night, and they've been complaining for about six months. They did complain to the code office, and they say that enforcement is a police matter. And so, I asked Gary, and Gary was actually working for me or us yesterday to do this, so thank you Gary, to get this taken care of.
And our current ordinance does not cover that?
Does not?
Why?
Because it starts at 11:00 PM.
Oh, right. Yes, okay. So you're saying that it should be anytime?
In residential areas, yes.
Does that negate the use of this compressor?
I would say that it would, instead, what it would do would be to encourage the owners and managers to put a buffer around it, because a buffer would take care of the problem. And the people began with the complaint to the facility and got nowhere. Were blown off.
Well, I can understand.
Yeah.
If you don't have to fix it, why bother?
Right, and you know, the buffer could be, an acoustical engineer could probably give a little bit of free advice. And just any kind of baffling system would probably solve the problem. So you wouldn't have to get rid of the AC. Instead, what you would do would be to properly surround it with baffling.
And it seems to me that that stands as a model for many of the things that we have, where it's a consistent complaint about a place or an activity, that we need to encourage the owners to look at buffer possibilities, rather than continuing on this, you know, more restrictive noise ordinances and make it stricter, stricter. And, you know, there is a responsibility of these owners to perhaps look at other alternatives to police enforcement.
Yeah, and they're at a standstill at this point, because noise during the day is not covered by our ordinance.
Right.
So, I would like to proceed by going to see the judge and showing him what we have. And if he agrees, is there anyone who would object to bringing this forward as an amendment? To have that redress, day and night, from loud noise, six decibels above the ambient level in the neighborhood? Except in the cases of, except in the cases of construction, which are already covered by the code?
Nancy?
Yeah?
If I understand, the construction stuff's of a certain time, and really what you're saying, six decibels over the ambient?
The typical noise in the neighborhood. Right now, the compressors on many air conditioners are working, but it's probably not going, it's the large ones that are not sheltered.
Okay, so I'm aware, I hear some of the same complaints on my side of town, too, in some of the heat pump systems.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
But are those commercial ones, or just residential ones that happen to be outside the main street?
What I'm hearing is really from apartment unit. So I guess that would be, was that commercial?
What, rather than larger?
Yes, that's what I mean. And actually, but the next question that arises is, I have a gentleman in my neighborhood complains about the backing up of trucks at our 30 Current Street during the midnight fixing, you know, water. You know, there's a water break, we have the trucks that start going out and fixing the water breaks. And they have their radios on, and they have at times the backup beeping, would this fall under that category as well?
I'm sure backup beeping is in six decibels.
As a safety factor, too. I mean, you have to look and say, it's a requirement in many cases.
Well, maybe the answer is for us to follow the lead that we're going to propose for another facility and do the same thing with our walls? Put some eggshells around it?
Egg crates, you mean?
Egg crates, well, I mean eggshell plaster.
Yeah, I understand.
I was gonna, I could donate the two I just brought.
I have no problem with this. When you say talk to judge, you get his take on it?
Right. Okay, the second problem is the problem of the noise that we've been having from a facility, or I mean, installation that faces north and bounces off the hill. And in this case, yesterday Gary wrote that he thought that it was already covered by the code. And specifically, he said, "No person, business establishment, or organization shall recklessly make or cause to be made, or continue or participate in the making, or causing to be made, or continued, in any louder unusual noise that disturbs the peace and quiet by means of any of one or more of the following acts." And they talk about horns and signaling, radio, construction repair of buildings, in our code, this is current code. Schools, courts, church, hospitals, sales, and then it also says, "Between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, shouting, yelling, chanting, and making use of the human voice or vocal cords in a louder-than-normal conversational tone or pitch other than in emergency legislation." So, what he suggests is that the problem with the court, outside court, and the bar is one that is already covered by our code, and that what we need to do is sharpen up our enforcement. And I started jumping up and down about the question of, if somebody has a band in the backyard of my neighborhood, and they're playing, at 11 o'clock, the police come and tell them to stop. And they don't have to single out each musician, so the bassoon player doesn't get a warning. Instead, the person who's managing the house gets the warning and they leave. And so, I mean, we already are enforcing it in some sense in this way. So it's a matter of will. And I would also like to take this to the police, or to the judge, see what he has to say. Questions on this? It's the brownies problem, quite honestly. And, you know, Randy Gray gave a wonderful testimony when we had the liquor hearing, and he said that the problem is geographical, it's the fact that the noise projects off the hill. And, you know, they're fully aware of it, and it's the only place where it happens. He understands there is concern, but I think they've, they, the police, have interpreted as, they can't get every single person who shouts. Well, that's my bassoon answer, you know, the bassoon, the drummer doesn't get a, the management of the house, the owner of the house gets the ticket if they don't break up the music.
The conductor?
The conductor. Okay. Any questions on this? This is a, yeah. Jim, and then?
No, I just, not a question, just a comment. I've been saying exactly that, with regards to this issue, to several people in a neighborhood association. But they also, all of these people have had instances where they have called and been told that that law cannot be enforced. So, please, go to the judge and get that opinion.
Right, and now we have Gary also saying, because the prosecutors would prosecute it, too, saying that it should be, it should be already covered.
Thank you.
So the next step is going to see the judge. I'll do them both at the same time.
Amy first.
11 minutes.
Well, no, Jim covered it, just an issue of enforcement, I mean, if it's already on the books.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm.
Nine and three-quarters, to be exact.
So, really what you're saying is?
Power is a dangerous thing.
Yes.
You're wondering if the judge is going to comment on this in terms of how it's enforced, or whether we need to change it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, ultimately, if he throws it out, then this is all for nothing, so.
Or we have to revamp it, that's what you're saying?
Right, that's what I wanted.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
And Nancy?
Yes?
This also fits in, and actually, it came out of a conversation that Ray and I had, you know, there might be a possibility here of some kind of an awning or something that would keep the sound from going up the hill, and would at least calm it down, if not solve it.
I think you're right.
They'd hear their own echo, rather than it going up the hill. So I think it's something that we might be able to work with the owner to encourage a buffer.
I think that's a good idea, as long as it's understood that it is something that has to be done, that we will enforce, because of the noise ordinance in this particular instance. Okay, second thing on my agenda is the Central Avenue house repair, and Bill handed it to me because he said that I had the services, or I was sitting next to him, I guess, was the reason why. 25 Central Avenue. And we had a, we have a house that needs some repair. It's a house that is, oh, it's a modest house, but it certainly is one that is livable. But we need to do several things that are on a list that many of you may have seen earlier in the month. But Debbie was kind enough to talk to Tri-County Community Action Agency, and they are willing to go forward and provide for the full cost of weatherizing, insulating the exterior walls, and sealing the home. And so that would be furnace replacement, and half of that would have to be paid for us. And if the City of Athens replaces the roofs and window, this could be counted as an in-kind contribution, then the community action would pay 100% of the furnace replacement. If the city wants to include air conditioning, this cost would have to be provided by the city. So, what we have is an asset that maybe some of you haven't seen. It's a modest house, but it's one that needs to be maintained. And so, I don't know if anybody has a strong opinion on how to do this. It seems that we have a deal that we could hardly pass up. The total price tag, should we choose to do it on our own, is quite substantial.
Like 33, 34?
Yeah, 33, or, you know, and the house is certainly worth four times that much or more. I mean, at least, because, you know, it could be, if we were on the market. So it's, there's no question but that we should be doing this. So the question is, would you like us to pursue the Tri-County option and try to get as much as we can, because this is going to be leased up by the Metropolitan Housing Authority? It is, or it has been, it will be? Yes?
It has been for a while. We've owned it at least 10 years. The question is, how much is Tri-County, are we talking about halving the cost of 33, or, I think it's 33 or 36, somewhere around there? Is Tri-County talking about, how much is, are we talking about getting a discount?
The winterizing is full cost, the furnace is half, unless we choose to go ahead with the roof and the window. I personally thought, having done roofs and windows myself recently, that the cost was a little bit, I mean, their estimate was maybe a little bit high. But this is Section 8 housing, and it's in relatively high demand in the city. We don't have many options.
Is there an itemized fill in there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so when you say half of this and half of that, I don't have my.
Well, I don't necessarily, well, they're, okay, here we go.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Okay.
Okay, so, they said exterior siding would be power washing in two paints, $4,000 to $5,000. Metal roofing, they're talking, or shingles. A metal roof, 15 to 17. I don't know if they're even guaranteed against acid rain anymore, so. New gutters and asphalt roof, $6,000, that's.
Six to nine.
Six to nine, that seems, I guess if the city's doing it, they'll really make us pay, won't they? Replace the roof of the carport in the garage. That we could probably do on our own next year. Replacement windows, again, $5,000. So, if we do $5,000 for the furnace and $10,000, and, excuse me, let me start again. If we do one part of it, that would be the.
We're doing the roof, windows.
The roof and the windows, then we'd probably make, pay about $12,000, and we'd get almost all of the remainder, except for the, except for the garage work done by Tri-County. Yes?
There was discussion last week, at our public hearing about the CDVG funds, about making that, for the repairs, part of our CDVG request. Would Tri-County's offer make that impossible, then?
I don't know. I, it seems like with us only putting forward a relatively modest amount, depending what the other options are. I mean, compared to the 30 or 40.
Well.
It's Debbie's.
I know.
Yeah, so we.
I guess I'm just saying that maybe that's part of the discussion about this whole thing.
Yeah, so maybe around $15,000 for this, to leverage the, but we'd have to pursue with them if that could be an option.
Nancy?
Yes?
If I may, Keith, that's why I'm housing did this at our request. I requested it because what I noted was that we were kept getting lower rental amounts from Central Avenue than we were from two houses on Blackburn Road. And their reply was, just utility costs is just too high from the state, because those are borne by the recipient. It's not covered under the rental situation, so it makes the cost too high. But we do have program income that we have received from that house and the others that could be used to fund the city's share of, it's in the CDVG fund balance.
How much do we have?
Enough to do it.
Enough to do it all?
Yeah.
Don't you think it's wise to use Tri-County, though?
Oh, yes, I do think that would be, because I know council's also indicated they wish to, if we could put the, Leslie Schaller could put the other funding together to do the Farmer's Market Pavilion, and that's one of the sources also possible there, is the program income along with loan funds not used, and then there's the other possibility is the Athens Revival Station, the old station project.
That's exactly what I was.
So those three are all possible funds to come up with our share of the repairs if we do the thing with Tri-County.
Okay, so, how, did people think about that?
Yeah, good, and then that could happen this season, this summer?
Yeah. I think that they're not.
If the Tri-County's available with some. Some of these we could do, because they're not, I mean, they're like the roof and the heating system, and maybe the air conditioning, the painting, those things. The real key is the windows and the energy efficiency things, make sure that it's in better shape.
So, would the city contract, maybe with Melissa's office, to do the windows, or would they do it all?
We could discuss with them if they do it all, or can we just pay them for it, or if we contract directly, either way would work out, I'll check with them and find out.
Because I know those folks from Palmeroy that do windows that are argon, I mean, they're plastic windows, they work reasonably well, and I think they're way below the price that they've quoted here.
Correct.
So, anyway.
Okay.
An unsolicited testimonial. Okay, so that's the second thing we'll have, unless there's a serious objection, we will take care of our property. I didn't know that we had money sitting around somewhere, it's good to know. So we'll use that. Next is a truck, the purchase of a truck. Nick Carr put forward the request to replace a truck. We have, I have at least, government pricing of about $27,742. That would be compared to his pricing through standard procedure. To me, it looks, I haven't bought a truck lately, but it's five-speed transmission, 4.10 axle ratio. I'm gonna keep saying this till Bill gets after me for time. $10,500 pound payload package.
I'm marking off the last two items on your agenda, if you keep doing this.
Tires, specific tires.
No one cares, Nancy.
I know. Well, I just want to make sure, is there anyone who would be opposed to having this up for purchase next time?
What's the total price?
With government pricing, $27.7. If we don't go, government pricing, $35.
Is it a hybrid?
Is it a hybrid? And it, no, it doesn't burn French fry well, either.
I'm waiting.
Soon. Sorry. Maybe when your children are here.
Oh, that won't happen.
Okay. Next, Storm sewer on North Court Street, I have, Ray has been kind enough to show me pictures of this, or I have them in stash on my desk here, but we don't have firm numbers. The only thing I know is it's gonna be a lot of money.
This is the one going down Fern?
Yes, it's the one going down Fern.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna buy on that one. And then unpaid rental permit fees, I've asked, there were quite a few people apparently who got stuck, but there's some people that I believe, and I've talked to Gary about this, and they're starting prosecution of people that have not paid. And the information was sent forward, and there's one especially where it's been several years, and I think at some point we've talked about trying to.
Why not just not have?
I know, that's, I don't think we can do it right now, but maybe we should explore that. Is there anyone else interested, if they don't pay rental permit fees, that they shouldn't have their rental permit?
Yeah, I mean, what is the fee? It's minimal, right?
It's $90 a year, is it?
Yeah. Just, well, okay, do you want to put it in the?
Is that a given?
I thought we talked about that before.
Well, we didn't really do it yet, so I'm proposing, let's do it. We've never had information, now we have information.
Well, sure, why can they have them that they don't pay for?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, up until now, they had a fine, I mean, they've had a fine, there's.
Which obviously hasn't.
No, the deterrent factor was not there.
Not with money.
Not with the money. They just pass it on.
Yeah.
Okay, so, should we explore how to do this?
Yes.
Okay, then you'll, may see it on the agenda soon. I'm giving up then, unless, Mayor, do you have any?
Well, I just checked today, because it was on the agenda, there are 273 properties that would get the fee.
That haven't paid.
That haven't paid, out of our 5,000-some. So it's not a real high percentage.
But there's one that's.
But 100 of them are owned by the same firm.
And they've been, and they have a couple of them, years of non-payment, right? And they also.
Yes.
Need to have, and they're selling the properties, so here we are with this.
Potential problem.
I guessed who it was.
I bet you won.
I did. I've got one quick question, if I may.
No, no, Jim.
I have time, sorry.
He's not keeping time. You've got your own time, what?
Mine is miscellaneous, are we there yet?
No, we're not there yet. I was skipping miscellaneous, Bill said he read it.
And mine was quickly going back to the storm sewer on the Fern Avenue. Is that being engineered so that the last part of Court Street? I know years ago, when we talked about it, the height of bricks and all of that was a big difficulty. Are we seeing that that's engineered so the rest of that can be done in brick?
The portion that could be done in brick, the way Andy's approached it isn't, you know, what we're doing under the street isn't dependent on a change in the elevation between the curb and the street. But what we're looking at here, unfortunately, is a storm sewer that runs basically from State Street along the west curb line, Court Street down to Fern Alley, and the main storm line that runs across Fern Alley. So the two of those both need to be repaired before we do any further work on North Court Street.
So my question is irrelevant.
We haven't.
And that's okay.
Out of time.
Very good, thank you.
We haven't done any engineering. We're just getting rough estimates of what it's gonna last. Okay, miscellaneous, Jim.
Speaking about landlord's, landlord tenant form, where are we?
I've asked Ray several times, I don't know where we are. I know I'm gonna do one with my new tenant.
Did you get one?
No.
Did we send him out, are we?
No, I don't.
I saw that you can pick up online.
Pick my phone.
The current one should still be online.
Okay.
Okay, download it.
I've got three months, two months, and I'll do it then. The rest of you out there, I hope you do it, too. All right, I'm through.
25 minutes.
Yeah, and five minutes was his question.
Yeah, and part of it was mine, the question. Planning and development, I'm sure you can stand up to that. If you try, you can.
The first thing I need to do is rearrange the agenda a little bit, because there's a member of the Northside Neighborhood Association who's gonna be arriving probably about 7:30, so I think we should just go ahead and take another item first. Mr. Rep, if you're ready to present about the Grand Vista final PUD, we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I have two copies of the plans, if we wanna, people down here to be able to spread one out, and one over on this side. And Lance can give us a little introduction.
My light went off, Bill.
That's my light, you don't have to worry about it.
It's green. I don't know what's happening. Okay, there you go.
Hi, my name is Lance Rep, University of States. I'm here to talk about the final PUD for Grand Vista Village, which is located on Lot 2 in the University of States. I hope everyone has got a chance to look at the stuff that the Planning Commission approved, and I think, looks like we've got a couple copies up there. My goal tonight is to start the process through on the final three readings on the PUD for Grand Vista. We've been through the Planning Commission, and the Shade Tree Commission, and the Disabilities And what I would like to do is present this at committee tonight, so that we could get the public hearing and possibly the third reading done before you go on August break. Because then I have a 30-day waiting period, so that would make the timing work well for us. The land development part of it is an in-house through Ray and Burgess and Nyckel, so we can start our earthwork, but by August 30th, we'd be just about ready to start doing some building. So that would make our plan work well. On your plans there, the Shade Tree Commission, let me just recap that for a minute. I went through two sessions, they come out and viewed it and everything, and my engineers and landscape people have put location of trees and stuff like that. And after I met twice with the Shade Tree and they came out, we kinda all got our heads together and said that I think these people know as much or more than my engineers and stuff about the trees. So we came up with a mutual agreement that when it comes time to plant the trees, we know where the locations of them are gone, but the Shade Tree people as a group are gonna help us select the right trees. Because we've put some trees up there that we thought were real pretty, and after I get talking to these people, they're not gonna grow out and around, they're gonna grow up, and we thought they were gonna grow out. So, it's just a learning experience, but these people have volunteered to help, so we're gonna use their expertise on that. As far as, we've turned in all of our packages, stormwater and all that stuff, the only thing that wasn't done at the time of the Planning Commission was a soil stability report. I just got that, I have a meeting in Columbus on Wednesday with the engineers to recap it, and I told Ray before the meeting, hopefully Thursday or Friday, I'll present that to Burgess and Nyckel. So that would complete our package, so that we could go ahead and have a public hearing, and then the Burgess and Nyckel would have approval on this soil stability report, before you had your first reading. Debbie, do you want me to go through the whole plan on Grand Vista?
Yeah, generally. And then, I'm sure if people want to know more about specific things, they'll let you know.
Grand Vista is a gated community. It sits on the hillside, if you're familiar with where the house is that Dr. Connor lives in right now, that's the Lot 2. Facing the Elks right there in that section. It's gonna be a gated, luxury community of seventy-two units. There'll be three-story brick townhouse condominiums. This is where the main entry road is right here. So when you enter these condos, you'll be going in on the main floor. Okay? And then you have an upper floor. The bottom floor, you will drive down below, and that is the garage and the air conditioning maintenance room. And there's also a bonus room down there. So each one of these units will have an individual elevator. So as you pull in down in the garage, you will have your own elevator that goes up. Should someone decide they don't want the elevator option, at each level, there'll be a closet there. But the shaft of the elevator will already be built in there. So in other words, if you buy it and you decide you don't want it, that's fine. But if you go to resell it, and the person buying it has the option to have an elevator put in there at minimal cost without major structural changes. The first phase is, we're gonna try to kinda go in the middle here as you come up off of University of States Boulevard. So it'll be ten four-unit buildings right around here, with a clubhouse and a pool and a courtyard. That's kinda similar to the villas at High Point in parents' construction. All the sidewalks and stuff will be on the main level. As far as lighting, what we decided to do at each gated entrance, we will have a regular street light with the names on it of the streets. First of all, for, that's safety reasons, that's consistent with everything else we've done in the development. Then as far as lighting goes in here, each unit will have its own mailbox with a light on the top of it. Those are approximately seven foot high with just a regular fifty-watt bulb like we have at University of States mailboxes have now on the Boulevard. And we're, it's in our opinion that that will be enough to completely light this area up. So we won't have to put streetlights. Because this is the one project that'll be probably more visible from town than any project we've got out there, so we wanted to minimize the lights. And the same way with the tree cover, the trees, this is Armby Road down here, so all these trees stay here. And then what we're gonna do across here is, every place you can see a driveway go up, we want to make sure we have a cluster of trees and stuff. Obviously, we can't completely hide this from, from town or anything, but we want to make it a very nice, appearing development. Like I say, it'll be a gated entrance. The only thing I didn't mention is, we've decided not to have sidewalks right here and this proportion right here. Simply, number one, it's a gated community, so there's a gate there anyways. But this is still a little bit of a commercial area down here, and feel the traffic's a little, probably more right here than it is anyplace else in the development. So there's no need to have a sidewalk there. We will have a retaining wall with a waterfall coming down right here. This is also a short retaining wall, more of a safety thing because of driveways. And then you've got the slope with the black and grass and trees going down through University of States Boulevard. This is Route six-eight-two out at this end, so this is the project area. This is a proposed bicycle path as it comes into our project from the old railroad bridge area. Right now, there's, it's also the access for the water line and the electric and everything that's coming up through there. We plan to gradually slope this project so that it meets this level. Right here is the High Point, there's a knob that sits right there, that's where the major earthmoving will have to take place. We'll have to take probably twelve to fourteen feet off that knob and spread it out to make, you know. We don't want to have three pads, we just want to have a gradual flowing development going up. I talked about the landscaping sidewalks. The architect of the project is John Valantour, and John Passine is our engineer, who's done most of our other engineering. Ron White will be the builder, who's also building houses, and he's also doing the villas. We're proud to say we're using all local contractors, and probably eighty-five percent of the suppliers are all local companies around here. There's been a few specialty items that we've had to go outside of Athens. As far as I know, I haven't identified any variances. If there would be variances that come up, I think our procedure would be to go to Ray right away and, you know, start at that level to take care of anything that we've overlooked. The internal roads of the projects will be privately built and owned and maintained, but we're gonna build them to the same spec that we used for Altamont Drive. Because it seems to have worked out very well with the rolled curb. As far as the sanitary, sanitary and the water and the storm permits and stuff, we'll go through the EPA, which also is signed off by the city and Nick Carr's department. And the utilities will be underground. Now that we have Planning Commission approval, we went to the next level to get the utility people in there to design their, how they're gonna do their, their utilities. I guess tonight what I'm asking for is for conversation from you on this, and I'd like to move it along maybe to the public hearing stage, so that we'd be ready to introduce it as an ordinance as soon as I get the Burgess and Nyckel's final.
So just to clarify, you've done the engineering on stormwater and on soils, and you, you're sending that to Burgess and Nyckel? We just don't have the letter back from them yet.
The soils and the storm and the erosion and, I forget all, whatever that, all in that package is already to them.
Okay.
The only thing that wasn't in it was the slope stability study. That means anyplace you put fill, you have to do a study of the ground underneath, you know. That's the one report that we couldn't get done. And we were working on that, and when we did the settlement agreement, we had to jump off that real quick and do the soil stability study for the villas. So that put these guys behind a little bit, but we're pretty well caught up, so that's where we stand on that.
And Paul, you had something?
Couple of questions. So the roads we privately owned interior, are you gonna do the plowing and the snowplow maintenance? Okay. And there's no sidewalk, you say, and the entrance going in and out, is there any connection to the bike path at all? I mean, is there anything, there's nothing but, there's nothing but vehicular, motorized traffic that get in and out, that's right.
That's a good question, Paul, and I honestly can't answer that, because I don't know if there's a possible way...
It's pretty steep.
To drop down right here?
Steep.
Going home and...
Well, it is steep now, but it might not be once everything's, you know, graded out and everything. It might not be as bad as it looks now, because there has to be quite a bit of work done up at this end of the bike path to make it so it's not steep for people to go up and down. Is that, it's a good question, I really honestly can't answer it.
I'm just figuring out if somebody does want to take a bike ride, how they're gonna get out of there.
Well, obviously they can go up the road.
Yeah.
But your question, I think, was, is there another way to do it so they don't have to be on the road to get to the bike path? I will get you an answer on that.
Other things, Carol and then Jim?
Okay. Lance, I have a question that, that really doesn't have so much to do with this particular part of the project. But one question that's come up in the transportation task force is what are the plans of University of States in terms of contracting with the city transit? Or, I know you've got some buses running around at the moment that say University of States, so I wondered what the intention is with those.
Actually, those buses are just designed for special events for our residents and stuff.
Okay.
You might be able to tell me more about how the city bus system works, but I think we should, we had a plan to be put on the, on the route.
So that's something we're going to have to take a good look at of how that's going to happen. And so that's just one more meeting to line up, but I think that's some, a discussion we need to have soon.
Who would that discussion be with?
Or probably me.
Or I mean.
And Ray, and the mayor.
Okay.
And Paul, and Amy.
Transportation Committee and Private Administration.
One of the things on our big project here that, that, you know, we've talked about before, we've left these fifty-foot walkways at different spots and everything. One thing we decided that we're gonna do in those areas, to use that area, is that the bike path will be going right by it on both sides of the street. And that's a great place for us to have just little pull-off places with benches and stepping stones and stuff like that, you know, where people can rest and everything. So we could probably incorporate, you know, certain pickup points for, for buses at the same time.
Okay.
My question, or comment, kinda goes in between Paul and Carol's comments. Because early on you said that there are, there are no sidewalks going out to the street, but probably there's gonna be bus transportation, and probably there's gonna be bike, bicycle riders in that, in that community. And we've tried to encourage, I believe through our code, that we don't throw people out onto the streets, onto the roadways, in order to make those connections, to make a connection with the bus, or to, for their kids to get out onto the bike path. And so I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the conscious decision to take the sidewalks off the entry, entry roads. I like, it's a great internal sidewalk system, but it seems that there should be a pedestrian link to University of States Boulevard, and therefore into the wider world.
I wrote that down, and my immediate thought is that Paul probably has a good idea, that this could very well be easily a sidewalk put right here, that didn't interfere with the gated, the electric gates thing, that you could go around.
Okay.
Because, you know, I don't think we're trying to exclude that area that much, which we'd scare the people walking or riding a bike up there, you know, that's not the intent of it.
Thank you for making that note.
Yeah.
I, I would also point out that one of the things we talked about today is the, the main roads on the subdivision don't have sidewalks. So even if there's a sidewalk coming down to that gate, they're coming out onto just the street.
At that point, isn't that, the bike, the bike path has two, will be two-sided.
Okay, so the bike lane will be...
We only have the bike path on one side of the road now, because of constructions going on, we, we didn't feel we could control it. So when we put the final paving down, then we have a bike path on each side of the, of University of States Boulevard.
And you mean really a bike lane, is that it, or it's gonna be part of the street, but with a little yellow line?
Identified with the, the bike sign and the little reflective things that go in asphalt for safety reasons.
We didn't do it, Dave.
Okay, well, I told you I wasn't gonna. Hey, Nancy.
So Lance, the open space that's included here is part of the total tally, even though it's closed off from the rest of the people in the...
Yeah. Nancy, this, this line doesn't show very good. I don't know if you can see it or not, but, no, it doesn't show up very good. But then all this green here, all the way around it, that's Lot Three, that's not Lot Two. So that green space still stays separated from Lot Two. Roughly this green here, it's not exact, but that's all green space around there. This still remains all green space, it's not owned by the, and all this. So... Uh-oh.
I believe that when the overall preliminary PUD was approved, there was discussion about an overall open space requirement. We may need to look back at that.
Yeah, that was part of the original, all recreation and open space was all counted toward the whole project.
So how will the people who are driving, riding along the bike path know that this is a gated community? Other than they'd have to look up and, I mean, is there going to be a fence there?
Uh, there'd be a...
No, I mean, the ones down below.
It's a hillside.
I know it's, well, I know it's a hillside.
Where?
Yeah, so you're riding along, how can you tell? I mean, run up there and have a picnic?
Well, the bike path will stop and go this direction. We, we don't have, we will not continue bike path down this way.
Are you gonna have a fence there or anything like that to demarcate the gated part, the exclusive part of this community?
We hadn't planned on it, it's just the gated part of the traffic.
Okay, so my last question is the most important one, at least in my opinion, and that is, we require bonds to protect the people who buy into a development, saying that we don't really want to pay for the road as a city, the developer should pay for the road. And so with private ownership, it seems like a very serious question, will there be a bond with this road even though it's privately owned? Because, I mean, if we don't protect the interests of the potential buyers, who will?
Well, actually, we own the condominiums until it's completely sold out, so we're responsible for the association. So that part of it, as far as the road bond, you won't be asked to accept it until everything's completely done.
So you are going to put forth a bond on this road?
No.
No? But, but the purpose of bonds is to protect the buyers. I mean, it's not, and the city from default and so on and so forth.
I'm a little bit confused by what you just said, though, about you won't be asked to accept it until such a time. Because I thought you said you were gonna, these were gonna stay private roads that you maintain?
Right. I guess that was confusing. What I meant was, we still want to build this the same way we did Altamont, and we had the city come out and inspect it. And we'll probably do the same thing on this, just as a check and balance, not only for us, but against our contractors doing the work. It's another set of eyes and ears for us.
Debbie?
Paul?
So, in the final endpoint, you are still on the road, or the condominium association are on the road?
Right.
And do they have in there, I see there's declaration of bylaws in this packet, and that's, is there a maintenance part of that bylaws for the road, I see?
There were, yeah.
Okay. And is that, would that be similar to a bond, Nancy, is that what you're thinking of? No? You want something?
No, I don't know, I mean, I just, this is totally new for us, and given the condition of University of States Drive, it just seems to me that it would be prudent for us to at least worry about it. Because it's not very good. I mean, we don't have to accept it, but who's gonna protect the consumers, I guess, is the question.
Do you want to give a quick update on University of States Boulevard? You told me that you had some news about that.
Yeah, we've got, we've been doing testing, and we sent away and a Florida company come up and did testing on the, the, the part that we have the base only, which is from the top of the hill where the residential starts. And that is probably gonna be a situation that we'll have to take up with the contractors who did the work. But we're gonna make repairs out of our own pocket, because there's some bad spots up there. And as we progress, you know, however this situation turns out, you know, but one way or the other, the road's gonna be fixed.
Well, you see, the problem is that people we know, our friends and neighbors are buying things up there, and it just seems that if the road is a mess, they're gonna say, "City, fix it." And so, I mean, that's what they expect from us, so I'm happy to hear that, Lance.
Okay, so it's, it seems to me like what, we need to hear back from Burgess and Nyckel, their response to the engineering that's been done for soil, slope stability, and stormwater. and stormwater. Are folks comfortable with going ahead and scheduling the public hearing so we can get the announcement made? And we would intend to have all the information back from Burgess and Nyepel before we would go to first reading, but we could go ahead and schedule the public hearing? Does that work? Okay.
With the time constraints, but the soil stability and study analysis has to be in our hands.
Yes.
Before first reading.
Yes.
I mean, I just think it's ridiculous for us to proceed.
And I would think, just, did you happen to ask, is that a 14-day notice?
14 days, yeah.
Okay, so basically, it gives me three weeks and we're meeting Wednesday, so I would hope Burgess and Nyepel could do it that quick.
Well, if you want your timeline, you know what the numbers are, right?
Yeah.
So I will work with Debbie to pick a date that works with other council meetings and we'll let you know about the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, should we go ahead and talk about Arminage Road since you're up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Another item.
When Debbie and I talked this morning, I thought since I was here, I would update you on our plans to vacate the old Arminage Road and follow up by opening up the new section of Arminage Road. I start with, Gary Hunter gave me a template to use for the wording to vacate and to dedicate, so I've typed that up and he has that. My engineers and survey people are in the final stages of drawing the legal part that goes with the, the vacating and the dedication of the new road. So that part is, is very, almost done. If you can kind of picture, this is 682 out here. You cross the railroad tracks there, you cross it the second time. That's where the city starts, and this is the old Arminage Road coming up through here. This is the new one we've built here. The old one, where you see the yellow, that is some areas that, there's a pretty good slope coming off of the old Arminage Road. And we've all, and we've said from the beginning, especially Pat Lawson, my construction manager, there's, those areas in yellow there, we felt that they've been there forever. So we were very hesitant, other than maybe take the blacktop off and put grass seed on it, to remove any of those sections, just because, I don't know, you know, it's hold, maybe it's holding the whole hill up and maybe it isn't. But we don't need it for anything, so we just thought we'd. Then the areas that aren't yellow here, both sides of the road are even with the current Arminage Road, so there's no concern there. But Debbie asked me to highlight that, to show you that. The other thing that, there's, there's actually a little shelf right above all these golf villages that I showed here. So the hillside kind of goes up, flattens a little bit, and then goes all the way up to the top of the hill. So there is a buffer there, but we just felt like, why move it if we don't have to? The new road will start here. We've left a hundred-foot right-of-way at the request of the mayor many years ago when we first started talking about this, just in case someday we might want to tie it into 682 and maybe bring it across the river to Thomas Road. So we went ahead and left a hundred foot, although we're only using 24-foot of, for a road now. The other reason that we need to leave, or we're going to leave this in here is Verizon has a telephone line and a cellular tower line in the ground in the ditch there, so there's no use paying to move that, because it isn't going to affect the golf course or anything else, so.
So you're going to work on, with Gary, on getting the language together for us? Part of the reason it seemed like a good idea to bring this up is if anyone wants to go out there and take a look at it, and take a look at the, the steep places and the places where it's, it's more level. Because I know that the first time we talked about this, there was some concern about whether changing anything would disturb the toe of that slope. So I wanted to make sure people knew that this was happening and have a chance to go see it. Nancy?
To clarify, then, you are not going to take the road out, you're only going to remove the blacktop? Is that what I understood you to say?
Part of this, part of this road, like right in through, you can't see it here, there's dotted line, part of that will become the cart path for some of the holes in the golf course. Right here, this section from here to here, it's flat, but we'll take that out and that will become grass because the golf hole goes like that, and then we'll build a cart path around it. And then we'll still leave this as an entryway to get into the golf course, the driving range and stuff like that. But we have to stop at, probably, there's the gas line, so that, that road probably vehicles, it'll be, still be private, but it'll be access for us to get into.
Could you, when you come back or when this comes back, tell us exactly how much is going to stay intact of the feet that are there and how much will be removed? Because I, you know, it's hard. Are you saying nothing will be removed? You know, the road bed stays, it's covered up, is not removed? The road bed is there?
The road bed itself.
Is going to be staying there without, with grass on top of it?
Right.
There is no place you're removing the road bed, is that right? Under current plans?
No.
But you're removing the asphalt?
Well, yeah.
But the bed is going to stay the same?
The bed itself, yeah.
The foundation.
There's one place where there's a hole that, or green that goes across there?
That's the one I just explained, right here. Right here. But Nancy's question was that the road bed itself doesn't have to come out there.
Okay.
All we have to do is take the asphalt out, and I suppose we have to get down a foot to get, so we put asphalt back on it.
Okay. And my other question is, when you sent your plans to, whatever the name of the consultant is, concerning groundwater protection, wellhead protection, was the new road on those plans?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they, and they did that?
It's always been on there, yeah.
Because that will certainly disrupt flow, so, could, as long as they know it.
Now, the culverts we have under the new road are exactly in line with the railroad culverts over there now. Now, but we did not hook them to those for the simple reason, we left, I don't know, maybe 10 yards, and so that, that gives you grass to the next culvert. So you've got railroad, grass, and then Arminage Road. And it has extra place for the water to go, I guess.
Right.
It might, other than.
Paul?
Okay, so this road is going to be, the asphalt's going to be pulled up, the bed's going to be there. If I understand, you've got some kind of cabins or something at the bottom, is that going to be accessible just by the golf cart? Those little boxes there?
Yeah, some of these.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, and further up going towards 682. Those, that hole there?
There up here?
Uh, in between, where, right there, that stretch right there.
Yeah, this is, this is actually a little older map.
So that's not there anymore?
These, these have to be moved down.
Okay.
And I can show you when you're out there, this is where the gas line comes off the hill, this is very steep right there.
Okay, the other question, I guess, is Verizon, you say, has a cable through there. I assume they're going to have access to it, or, so that's what they're going to use the bed for if they need to?
Right. They'll have access and we have to work out with them yet when we get around that one golf hole there.
Okay, and the, a new?
Just don't break down.
Big chair, I guess.
And the new road is going to be, how wide, you say?
It's 24-foot with a one-foot berm or two-foot berm, Mayor, you remember?
It's a two-foot.
Two-foot.
Okay, no sidewalk?
No. Just, it'll be a lot safer, better road than Arminage Road is now, obviously.
Oh, a sidewalk even safer?
It'd be more dangerous.
Right. For people to walk on the road or the sidewalk.
I would just be concerned, our concern is now that people drive fast on the old Arminage Road, we're concerned they're going to drive fast on the new Arminage Road, too.
Carol? I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to when University Estates comes forward with the proposal to build their bridge across to Columbus Road. I'm waiting.
That's a, we're hoping there's a, what is that phone, Mayor, that we can apply for?
Okay.
I think it's important to know, I mean, there's really only three or four houses on that road.
Yeah.
And they're all clustered out after you're through University Estates. And the other nearest house outside of the city was Gary.
Dunphy?
No. Used to be a firefighter.
Gary Bruce?
No.
He used to be a firefighter.
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway, a couple of houses there, but it's a lot.
They're the real, real track here, there's three families right here and actually the city probably travels the road as much as anybody.
The Wilfils.
The Wilfils.
Well, okay, I was under the impression most roads we're trying to build have sidewalks, so we don't have to retrofit them, no?
I think that some of the specifics on this one are in the settlement agreement.
I think what happened on that one, Paul, is that that road was began construction and it was completed before, I think, the annexation to the city, it's a chip and seal road, and it was done to county specifications because at that time they were not in part of the city.
That road's been chipped and sealed already?
Yes.
Yeah, a chip and seal road.
Okay, so anybody who has questions about it, I'm sure Lance will be happy to take you for a little tour.
Yep, sure will.
And, and you'll be working on the, the language with Gary?
If I can afford to pay for the fine for the red light being on as long as it's there.
That's me that's going to be paying that fine, so.
Can I make one more timeline than Nancy on your noise ordinance?
Okay.
That's the loudest.
That's what I said, ours, I cannot hear anything.
I know, it's very hard out here.
It really is.
Okay.
And that's after we added all the speakers out there.
To, to magnify the sound of the conversation.
Yeah.
So onward.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you, Lance. We, the next, we're going to go back to the first item on the agenda, which is the proposed rezoning of the north end of Court Street, the B2D. I have maps for everyone, which Ray brought this evening, which show a 500-foot radius from the parking garage. And everybody received, I think, an email and a copy of the requested information about how many parking spaces are currently used for non-residential purposes. So you should have that information, it was an email from Steve.
134.
Yes, it's more spaces than we thought. It's, so a total of 134. I think that's the additional information that people wanted before we jumped back into this discussion.
You want to orient us on our?
Okay, the middle part of the map there that has like three purple sides and one blue side?
Right.
Is the parking garage.
Oh, okay.
And?
The triangle up to the top of it is the Domino's Pizza area.
Right. Right. So the triangle that's just outside would be Domino's? If you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So if we went back to the 500-foot radius? It would grandfather in anybody who is currently using the parking garage for their parking. If they already have a zoning permit and they are, are using the parking garage for their parking, they would be grandfathered in, is my understanding. So anything that's outside the circle that currently has to have commercial parking would still have to have commercial parking.
Very colorful, Ray.
Yeah, Andy tried to go through that and, and adjust it so that the 500-foot radius was actually from various points on the platted property that the parking garage uses or sits on. So it's not a perfect circle, but he made some changes to it, so.
And there are a couple of extra copies of the map if anybody else wants to see one. What do people want to do?
I thought we already had a, that Jim had the plans to broker the deal.
We were talking about going ahead with the rezoning, but falling back to the 500 feet for the parking garage, that, with regards to utilization of the parking garage to satisfy commercial spaces. And so we were going to, as I understood it, follow the original plan going down Court Street, North Court, off to the side on Mill Street and State Street and all that, just, we were falling back to the parking lot.
Right, so we have to ask the planning commission to accept this change?
Yeah, because.
For the parking?
For the parking, yes. And so we would have a resolution on the agenda on next Monday night asking them to do that. And we, and I personally would like to see, having been on the zoning board, and I know you've been on, you two have been on, it's always good to have a, a document like this in the codes.
So we can reference the map?
Yes.
And then the other piece of, of what we discussed, you know, it is in the comprehensive plan, that the downtown should all be the same zone. People have been asking the planning commission and council to make this change for a long time, so when we get a response from the planning commission on the 500-foot thing, that we could bring both ordinances through at the same time, the 500-foot and the zoning change?
Yes.
So they could be read through at the same time. Paul?
Clarification on this, I, I noticed some of these, the circle basically cuts through some parcels halfway. So the interpretation, if, if one little wee piece of your parcel is in the circle, you're good for it?
I think so.
Okay, just, I just?
No, no, wait a second. No, no, wait a minute, I just want to make sure that it's understood, that one of the powers of the zoning board is to interpret the map.
Okay.
Okay, so they can do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to?
That would be my.
I mean, I think it's prob-
Jim?
And as I understand it, in the past, parking was granted to some properties outside of the circle.
Yes.
And those are the ones that Debbie's talking about.
Grandfather.
Looking grant. And I don't, maybe we ought to have some indication of what those are.
Okay.
So this satisfies my interest in having a transition with respect to parking, and so I'm happy with what you've done, Jim.
Yeah.
Very good.
And I think there are some folks here who wanted to speak to us about this this evening. I've received a number of emails from folks in the neighborhood association, some of whom seem to think that this is a, a reasonable way to, to handle the concerns about the, the possibly increased density in that end of Court Street. And I think there are some folks who still would prefer that we just not do the rezoning. Not everyone's going to be happy with the decision that we make here, I think. If there's anybody who came to speak with us about this this evening, come up to one of the microphones and tell us who you are.
Where do you live?
My name's Aaron Leatherwood. I'm the co-chair of the Athens Near North Side Neighborhood Association, and I live on Woodward Avenue, about three blocks to the south of, of Carpenter Street. I've spoken or corresponded with somewhere between a half dozen and a dozen people about this issue. I wouldn't claim to represent any of them simply, simply to have had the opportunity to talk about this issue with people. I've, I've heard a lot of opposition to it, and, and there's been some discussion, and that discussion has been along the lines of, okay, if we're not crazy about this idea, and, and generally people have been negative towards the idea of rezoning, what is it about this specifically that, that people have concerns about? And certainly parking has been at the very top of the list. In general, there were, there were speakers at the last meeting on this issue, those speakers referenced concerns about noise and concerns about the quality of life. Quality of life in general being related to, to, to issues that come with crowding, and specifically parking. To the extent that, that parking becomes an issue, it overflows into the neighborhoods. I said I lived to the south, actually, I lived to the north. I said I lived to the south, actually I lived to the north, I'm sorry. Parking overflows in, into the neighborhoods, and, and it makes it more difficult for people who are currently challenged for parking to find places for their cars. Solutions that we're currently looking at as a city, like, like the whole hangtag solution, might, might alleviate that somewhat, but if there's less parking, then a hangtag system becomes less workable as well. The other concern I've heard, though, is that people have said, well, it sounds like if B two D, if, if, if this lower block of Court Street were changed to B two D, it sounds like the number one concern there would, would relate to things like, there wouldn't be additional parking if the parking then were taken into account. But there's concern that the variance process would then kick into gear, and we've seen again and again where people are, are just short on parking, could you please approve our variance because we only need parking here? There, there, there has to be something about the variance process, and, and in general for that matter, about the planning commission processes, that say adequate parking has to be provided. I could talk some about a, a number of variance requests that I've, I've seen come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. There was the request last fall, which was eventually withdrawn, so who knows which way it would have gone, but a request that was withdrawn last fall that said, can we place parking for a bar 800 feet away from our bar next to the middle school? Someone thought this was reasonable, someone thought this was likely to go through, therefore it was proposed. If it hadn't seemed like a reasonable thing to have proposed, it would not have been proposed, but someone thought that they could get that variance through. And the reason why is because past variances like this have gone through, and it imposes, it imposes a large time load on the people of the city in looking at these things, considering them, and responding to things that we shouldn't consider. And, and so I, I would ask council, if, if we're going to go through with this, that we look at issue, that we look at situations that, that the possible change in parking here can create, and think about what this means for the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and the planning commission processes. It comes down to zoning is important, and we need to think about how we can keep the zoning process or the zoning code real. How do we keep it real? How do we meet, how do we say that zoning matters? Which isn't to say it doesn't, people get very concerned about it, but there's also a large number of variances, and there's concern that this, that this change will increase the number of variance requests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy?
I just have a question on the, on the thing that we got today, on the nine blocks today, on the 18 West State Street and the 16 West State Street. It says nine at each of those, are those, they share those nine or they each have nine?
They each have nine.
Where are, where's, I know where the nine are for West State, 18 West State Street, but where are the nine for 16 West State Street?
Off Rose Alley.
Off of the alley back there, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Paul?
Okay, so this is really not going to change the parking on that end of town. The actual line where the parcels are are going to be determined by the zoning board appeals, and we're just going to go right up, extend it all the way up to the Armory as a B two D. That's the bottom line.
And then we had, on a previous map drawn in to include part of West State and Fern Alley, that we had done a walking field trip previously to look at those, those areas. So that'll be the recommendation when we get the parking 500 feet limit back from the planning commission if they decide to go along with this idea.
And in response to Aaron there, before you came in, there was discussion about the noise ordinance in terms of bar noises and things of that nature. That was Nancy's committee, the first committee, and she was talking about getting together with the judge and seeing where that sits. And I know that you now have an alternate on the zoning board appeals in your neighborhood. So, and the other thing, as I'm aware, the zoning board appeals needs to get together with Gary Hunter sometime in the future and have an orientation. I don't, I know they've been scheduling for quite some time and haven't been getting together, no, for, for just what you're saying.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak to us on this issue?
Good evening, I just want to, am I able to ask a question, Debbie?
State your name, too.
Smeltzer, 18 West State, Mike. If I'm reading this correctly, this would not extend to 18 West State, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, is there any ability to extend, to make that diameter bigger? Where did that 500-foot radius originate from? Or we're reading back to now? Kind of two questions in one, but...
Yeah, I mean, we don't generally get into a, a back and forth discussion on details of, of stuff when people are speaking to us in committee, but that did come from the, historically, it was in the code at that radius, at that distance. So it's a standard that existed before in the city, and I think it's based on the reasonable distance that people are generally willing to walk from their, where they park their car to a destination. So, I mean, it's a standard that did exist previously in Athens code.
I don't remember how long it's been there, do you, Rick? As long as I can remember, it's been in the code. I think shortly after the parking building was...
I think it's a doubling of the 250 feet that is in the, for our zones, because if you're walking into your home carrying baggage and everything, I mean, 250's been our standard, and I, I think that they've just, whoever wrote it way back, probably around the time of the building of the parking garage, said, well, it was just used to 500. I don't know that, that there anything exists as to a study or what's reasonable or not, or versus 600 or 400 or anything.
I mean, it's that old, Mike.
Okay, well, such a green community, I would think we could walk a little further maybe today, everybody's in shape and not wanting to pollute the air with their cars and so forth, I wonder if that would be possible. So my question is, is there a way to extend that diameter or go to a different boundary on the north side with the parking exception?
It'd be the whole process of recommending to the planning commission and all that, if there would be a majority of council that would want to do that. That would be the process, as I understand it, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Because we started with those two alleys, which I wasn't real familiar with, and somebody above those two alleys was concerned that it wasn't going to include all of that north block of Court, and then it went back to the planning commission for clarification. So if, if those two alleys could be reconsidered, and I, I don't remember the name, but I believe one of them is Fern, maybe one is Rose.
But that's going to be rezoned. The thing you're talking about really is the distance for the commercial parking and use in parking.
I guess that's true, yeah.
There are two different things here.
You're right, you're right, yep. They didn't used to be.
Uh, they used to be, then there wasn't, and now they're...
Okay. If people want to have further discussion about this one-on-one, that can happen later. The, the places to, you know, it would be possible for someone to go to the planning commission and make an argument for a different boundary, but I think that what we discussed and we're comfortable with is going with the, the standard that had been in Athens City Code. Did anybody on council want to reopen that discussion about the distance?
No, I was, no, because we've had, as you said, the proposal for the two alley boundaries didn't seem to be popular, didn't seem to be satisfying anybody. And the other option of going, extending the parking everywhere, didn't seem to be viable either, so we're falling back to historical boundaries, as our proposal. But it's a proposal, and all proposals can be altered in ways that the president and Debbie have talked about.
Okay.
Okay, um, next thing on our agenda, and I'm really sorry about the length of time, but some of this is beyond my control, Bill, is substantial damage. We, we talked about this, um, a couple weeks ago, the time, the evening that we had a separate planning and development committee meeting, and I promised to get some, well, we talked about looking at what the county uses in terms of substantial damage, and then people wanted us to look at that a little bit more deeply. And this is in reference to flood plan regulations or zoning, if anybody's home or business is substantially damaged, which would be 50% of the value, or if improvements, if there are substantial improvements, that, that would kick in, having to comply with existing regulations if it was a non-conforming structure. So what we talked about was the auditor's appraisal and, is that divided by point 3.5 because of what the relationship of appraised value to market value? I've gotten some more information since then from Bob Eichenberg from the county planner about substantial damage. It looks like the, the auditor's appraisal information is commonly used because it's readily available, but it's not the most accurate information. So rather than putting that as, as the one standard, it would be more appropriate to say that if there's a recent sale, or if the, the property owner provides a professional appraisal, that those would be more accurate values than the calculation based on assessed value. So it seemed like we needed to put the opportunity in there for people to provide information that was going to be more up-to-date or more accurate than the auditor's assessed value. So I'm bringing this back to you with that suggestion, and one question, which would be, what do we want to consider a recent sale? If we use that language, to say the standard for determining value? Because if somebody makes an improvement that gets close to 50% of the value, then there starts to be a question about what the value is. We have to have something to peg that to, some kind of clear standard. So I would think that we would say first, a recent sale or a professional appraisal, and if neither of those are available, the calculation based on the assessed value that the, the county auditor has recorded. Paul?
Recent sale would be, what, five years, four? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that we would just, we should probably say what recent means if we're going to put that in there as a standard.
The level playing field would be the auditor, and then supplemental documents being used, maybe with the service director. If, you know, I would say that you'd want to have it very even for everyone, because there is a renewal every six years, and it's point 3.5%, and it's not perfect, but it certainly would make it even. I suspect that if we had a major flood, FEMA would be in here and it would be more rigid than that, but, um...
So you prefer the auditor's number first and then...
Well, you know, and I'm only one person, but I prefer it because everybody knows what the issues are. I mean, you could do comps, the way they do in the real estate market, so you, I mean, the comparable sales, because on a street, there's so much variation, so a recent, I mean, it's just impossible to use it. Maybe in the, I mean, a three-bedroom home is not a three-bedroom home across even a block.
Right.
And so I, I would like it to be general, and then specificity come in at an administrative level, maybe for, or zoning board. Zoning board does that, too, I think we did it with some ransom property on West Washington Street.
So use the, the assessed value and have an appeal process for recent sale of, of that property, not just, you know, any neighboring property or professional appraisal? Is that some way to structure that?
Can you use the term, there's a term, real estate people do use, the comparable sales? Isn't that what we would say? Or comparable sales data? But that still would give someone who wants to put the money on an edge.
It's a tough one to struggle with, because I've had personal experience after a flood, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And I'm imagining that if a person did not want to have to come up to the new standard, they're going to want the property to appraise as high as possible. So to use about any kind of professional appraisal or any recent sale is certainly going to be a higher number than the auditor has, considerably higher, which I don't think, you know, works well for us to upgrade housing stocks after a flood. Boy, I'll tell you, I think when you get beyond the, I would like it to be able to go to the service safety director with the criteria that they could make a decision, but boy, I'd hate to, I'd hate to be the service safety director trying to be stuck with that and weigh it. So, I don't know. I agree with Nancy's level playing field, the numbers might not be great, but at least they're hard passed.
Does anybody know, if, if you disagree with the assessed value of your property, you can go to the county auditor and request that it be reassessed, right?
Downward usually.
Has Debbie seen this? Okay, Gary spoke with Bob Eichenberg, and Bob indicated that the county language is not good, it is too restrictive. He suggested reconsidering the 213 language, which Gary will review. So there may be more, more that you want to look at before you make your final decision.
What's the date on that one?
June 4th.
So this is June 1st we're looking at here.
He changed his mind.
Okay, so shall we come back to this a little bit later?
I think that might be a good idea.
More information is always better.
How good if, yeah, and, and part of the thing is, we're going to get an assessment from the property owner, maybe we should just forward it to the county auditor at the same time, so if it goes upward, we should let...
Debbie, are you in receipt of all this? Okay. You have questions about substantial damage? Okay, you've got lots of stuff, okay, good.
All right, so we'll come back to that. Site plan review. We talked about this, and we had some questions that Debbie sent to Randy at Pogomeyer, and we have some answers. So at our last discussion about site plan review, we had a question about why are the agriculture and horticultural buildings exempted? And his answer is that we wouldn't need to exempt this unless we wanted to, that they saw it, since we're in a more rural area, that sometimes that's exempted, they didn't think it's a, so, pretty much up to us, and they, they gave their rationale for why they had put that recommendation in. The second question was about the provision of topo maps at one-foot contours, and whether that might be something that would end up being expensive, or, you know, did we need it really at that level of detail? And his answer is that he thinks asking for that information is really common, even if it's residential, because you're looking at parking and driveways, and those things need to be graded. So he didn't think that this was an unusual thing to ask for. The third question was related to traffic flow, that it recommends a traffic impact study for new construction expansion or change of use that would generate more than 100 new vehicular directional trips during the peak hour of generation. And he thinks that that has some real validity, and that the 100 new trips would be about the equivalent of what you would get from a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. He doesn't think we should ask for it for something that would generate less traffic than that, because it's an expensive thing, but, but that's a substantial amount of traffic. So, those are answers to questions that we had, and I think that that may be, you know, we need to get it drafted into ordinance language, but I think those are the things that council members said you wanted information about. So any discussion about what we want to do with those three things? Greenhouses, do you want them, if there's going to be a new greenhouse, do you want to go through site plan review, or do you want to exempt it?
Number 10.
I probably shouldn't talk about it.
No, you probably shouldn't vote on it, maybe.
Deliberate discuss.
The land is so valuable in this town, I can hardly imagine that we would be building new greenhouses.
It could happen.
Right. But the site plan review, I think, is a pretty straightforward process, and if we're saying that you would want, we want site plan review for three-family houses and up, does it seem like we should include them?
The last two major greenhouses in this town bet the dust for apartments, so...
That's probably almost certainly going to be.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. The second thing, topos with one-foot contours.
That's not hard to get anymore.
Yeah, I'd say do it.
Easy to get, pretty standard. The consultants seem to think that this is a totally normal thing to ask for, and that was our question, really, is what's the threshold? What's reasonable to ask? Okay. Traffic studies, if there, it's expected to generate 100 cars in peak traffic hour, in peak hour.
So is that a mandated study? Every time, we think there's 100 cars in a peak hour? Is that pretty much what we'd be saying?
So if the thing that's being proposed would generate a lot of traffic?
Somebody's going to want it anyway.
Right. Did you have something?
Yeah, so I think Bill's comment led to a question. How do we know that this proposal is going to generate 100 cars? Is the proposer going to tell us that? Or is, are they going to be smart enough and say it generates 96 cars?
Or 47.
Sounds, yeah.
If they're real smart.
Seriously, are there standard, are there generalities somewhere?
Traffic generation tables, I bet.
I think, didn't he say somewhere, this is about what a fast-food restaurant would do, 100 cars? So there must be some generalities.
But most of the time, we've been discussing apartment complexes. So would we say everybody leaves the same time, 100 beds? I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know what the threshold is for residential.
How many beds does it take to do this? 800?
Carol? I think that the model for apartments would be the peak class hours at OU, for example, and I'm thinking like of Courtyard, and of course, part of the way that we mitigated that was through the bus service, and that certainly has reduced the number of cars that come out of that to substantially less than that at the peak hours. I mean, there's more traffic, for sure, but when you've got a bus that's cram-full of students at 8:00 AM, you know that they're not all driving with cars.
At the same time, we're trying to talk about traffic studies, right?
Right, when we think we need one.
So, you know, because the traffic study would kick in the bus eventually.
We could ask for one, yes, and say, therefore, you need a bus, but we're kind of going to that anyway, in terms of if you're going to build an apartment complex, you're going to buy into the bus system.
Right. So Ray, do you have currently, administratively, some kind of guideline about when you need that kind of more detailed information around traffic?
I guess basically, it's just a function of, do we think it's a large, large enough facility? I mean, it's, it's very subjective at this point. We don't have, you know, what you call a true standard. One of the questions that was running through my mind as the discussion progressed is, if we require the traffic study, then what do we propose we're going to do with the information? And I think that's the key link, you know, from my perspective. You know, if we can get the study, and then how do we establish some standard methodology to apply those results to whatever you want to call it, a requirement, a consequence, a decision-making process, so that it's consistent?
Is there a standard traffic study? I mean...
Yeah. Yeah, traffic engineers can conduct standard traffic studies, but they only do so when they're requested, you know.
But when we say we want a traffic study, that's not one of 42 different studies.
They're precisely identical, but they're here again. Traffic studies have standards by which they're to be applied, and how they, you know, how they gather the information.
Does the 100 cars in the peak hour seem like a standard that you could work with?
If we find a table that tells you what would be in that category?
Yeah, that, that would be the key, you know.
Table.
Establishing when that threshold occurs, how do you know that you've got your 100-car peak when somebody gives you a proposal? You know, if it was a, if it was a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, it'd be relatively simple. But there are other things, for example, let's say they're a medical products supplier, you know, prosthetics and those kinds of things, and they're going to put a facility in, are they going to have, are they going to have 100 cars an hour?
Okay.
All right, a day, I'm sorry, a day. No, it's 100 cars in an hour.
Well, I know, because, I mean, certain businesses won't. I mean, we have to have some kind of standard there that's, and we could call BNN's traffic engineer and see if he has a chart that has some degree of ideas for it. And I'm assuming that in this review, to warrant, you actually want traffic signals only when they're warranted under ODOT guidelines? Could anything other than that be impossible to frame up? Well, the theory is that you keep the flow of traffic, I mean...
And the warranty establishes, in terms of legal liability, if it's not warranted by the study, then you're exposing yourself to additional liability if you install it and it's not warranted.
Okay.
Okay. I think I saw Paul had a hand up a couple minutes ago.
No, I think the questions were answered.
Got it? Jim?
Well, but the solution wouldn't necessarily have to be a traffic light. I think the, what we would do with this traffic study would be, ask the developer to, to show us how they're going to deal with this problem. They are going to direct traffic some other way, or they're not going to dump it on East State Street, they're going to dump it onto an adjoining street, or some, some alternate way of dealing with it, or it could be a traffic study. So I think that would be simply the, the answer to your question would be, if, if the traffic study showed that, yes, that many cars were going to be there, how they're going to be handled.
So, okay, what you're saying, and Ray's saying, is that the consequence could be, you know, a bus system, like Carol's talking about, in terms of residential, a turning lane, if it's commercial, is that what we're talking about?
Some mitigation.
Right.
Yeah, so that's where it'd kick in, and that's what we do.
So we're asking them to show the mitigation.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, so I think we got answers to the questions people had. Has anything come up in the last, that you've thought about since the last committee meeting that we need to address before we get this drafted into ordinance language? Yes, no? Okay. Debbie and I have an appointment to work on this tomorrow, then. So I'm giving her back the one with the notes. And I have a miscellaneous. So Bill, I, do you want me to come, like, mow your grass or something?
Yeah.
Do penance. We got an email from Gary Hunter, there was some, this is around the land development ordinance, and how do we make it enforceable? That the current language is in the purpose statement, rather than in the main body of the code. So Gary sent us suggested language to put in Athens City Code 270201, rather than the purpose statement, that he believes would make this enforceable, as part of the content of the land development ordinance. Comments, questions?
It looks like most of the thing is really just that we're requiring a shell. Is that what I'm seeing here? Shell do this to help preserve the general shape, size, natural...
And that it's in the right location, instead of only in the purpose.
And intent.
Yeah.
In fact, he says, take the purpose.
Right. So we would put it here instead and remove it from the purpose, because it would be in the body of the code. Okay, Nancy says we can leave it in the purpose.
Well, I mean, that's, the purpose tells you the overview, and this is just implementing it.
Yeah.
So as long as we're talking about this, Ray, is there any way we can get the owners of the summit area to put some hay bales up to stop the silt from going across the street and into the stream?
Is he telling that already?
Yes. On Friday, there was, well, we haven't had any rain lately, but on Friday, I was driving through the dairy barn for a grad party, and it was pretty substantial, dirt on the street.
Yeah, I went up today, in fact, to look at it. I didn't see the, didn't see the results of that, so...
It was, I'm sure it was...
Yeah, my, my concern at this point is just having them stone the entire, that entire construction entrance at this point, because that's where it's...
Just a baffle, hay bales. Anything like that would work. It's just, it's there, and it's been that way for a long time, but it's time to do something.
But I think, if I may comment on this, with all due respect to the law director, I still would find this extremely difficult to apply. You know, there are, there are model ordinances out there that have some specific standards that can be applied in these kind of situations, that take far less subjective extrapolation to try to figure out what general size and shape, and some of those kind of vague terminologies mean.
Do you have model ordinances that do that, that you could get to us?
I think you have to do a radical change to your ordinance, because if you look through in the code book, for example, under the appendices to the land development ordinance, Title 27 gives examples of setback cuts from all slopes, and shows a cut. The slope's like, you know, it was like this, and you're making it like that, and how to do calculation in it. So right in the text of the code shows cutting and altering hillsides. And it emphasizes on, in the language, as you read through it, it emphasizes slope stability is the person, in fact, it says, you shall cut no more than what it takes to maintain, to have slope stability sufficient for your building, your project.
And in enforcing the current slope stability standards on the summit project, there are some areas where, because of the requirements, they have to totally remove topsoil and soil to bedrock to meet some of the requirements.
And they put some back in.
I mean, that kind of runs counter to what, in general, we're talking about trying to accomplish. So we need to change the requirements so they support the purpose and scope. Because when you look at, what does the purpose and scope mean, and how you're going to implement it, you said, what this means is, you've got to follow the steps that are described in the following sections of the ordinance. And if the sections in the ordinance don't support the general purpose and scope, you've got to follow the steps that are outlined, because that's the only thing you have to interpret, the purpose and scope. It's the tool that you have to make it happen. So it has to be clear, and it has to be definitive.
Ray, are you sure that you wouldn't bring in a geotechnic person to do this, who, who would know about the angle of repose for sandstone versus shale, who would have the notions necessary to do this? I mean, before they say, well, we're going to scalp this hill, shouldn't they have consulted with somebody who knows what they're doing? It seems every time we go to a plant, it's like of the houses. And it's like, we're not in Madison County, folks, we're in a very vulnerable environment. So this language is not for laypeople, this language is for a geotechnic person. And what I've read from Burgess and Niple is that they understand full well what to do. It's just this discrepancy between what Burgess and Niple says, our code says, and what these guys are putting forward. And they're, and they're, like, each time I read it, they seem to be a little bit off yet. Isn't, is that a fair statement?
But they're, they're applying and interpreting and being required to meet the engineering standards.
Okay.
Okay, but the engineering standards are minimum standards to maintain slope stability, not general shape, size, and contour. And in the process of doing that, there's a requirement for setback, depending on the shape and configuration of the slope. I mean, I'm not telling you something you don't know, but all those are specific applications.
But we have people who come in here and draw plans on a hillside, and don't even know what the heck is underneath the bedrock. I mean, that's what I read in the things from Burgess and Niple. I mean, they're fools, in a way, because they're, they're setting up a sure-to-fail system. And so, you know, I personally think, well, okay, let's put this in, and then let's modify it as we go on. I mean, I just am tired of the scalping and the rest of it going on.
But Nancy, this, there, the thing that was happening now with Burgess and Niple is the enforcement of Title 27.
Okay.
That's the process you go through to enforce it.
Why, yeah, and, you know, and did they ever read it before they made their plans? I don't think so. I mean, it's just ridiculous. Oh, I know the geotechnic people did it, but...
So do you have model ordinances that would help to accomplish this?
Yes.
Could you get those to me?
Sure.
From the state of Ohio?
Some are from Ohio, some aren't.
They would, I mean, wouldn't that be essential, because the...
Yeah.
I mean, Title 27 is not my favorite, but...
Yeah, most of the things we're talking about are not, are not contrary to the LRC, so...
So do people want to do what Nancy's suggesting, and start this through, and come...
I don't know if I'm suggesting that, but...
Back to the other pieces, or do you want to look at this at our next committee meeting with sample ordinances from other places, and then try to do something comprehensive?
B.
Well, I think that we can't do it. I mean, we can read it all we want, the planning commission can read it, they don't know, we don't know. I think we need somebody who knows what they're doing, who's an expert in enforcing the law to do it. I mean, and to writing law. I mean, we can take, get somebody who's a geotechnic person who does land development law, and have them review it.
Yes, but first, we have to decide what we want this to say, and so maybe hearing some other language.
Well, yeah.
And then if we, we decide what we want Title 27, what the purpose of Title 27 is, and if we need to hire somebody, bring somebody in to, to write the standards, we don't know how.
Well, I'm really delighted it's being enforced, the way it is. I mean, that we've had this real firm read of it, you know, that Burgess and Niple is doing the work for us, but I, I do think that we do need to start to implement the anti-salping part of it, but maybe it can wait six months more.
Would it make sense to look at some of the model ordinances and ask Burgess and Niple, send them some information about, this is what we're trying to accomplish, here are some models, can you help us figure out how to make this be, you know, clear and consistent, and, you know, just, they're the ones who are going to be reviewing things against it. It would be, I think it would make sense to get some input from them. Paul?
I'm kind of saying, I know there's a faction of people out there that would like to see this put in place as fairly possible. At the same time, I think, well, we're talking about two different things. One is retaining the shape of a hill, the other one is retaining the stability of the hill. And in theory, you know, the, the hill does, some of these hills are always going to be unstable, they're going to be moving, but the question is, if you develop on them, we're trying to develop stuff to make it, the development is what destabilizes the hill. So I'm not sure if the retention of the shape of the hill is more important than the development, or the other way around. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a problem. But if you read, it's really only the first part, and shall preserve the general shape, size, and natural topographic features. Because shall maintain at least the existing levels of slope stability is already required, isn't it? And not increase the potential for slope failure is required already. Shall preserve at least the existing capacity of watercourses, and shall not increase the potential for flooding. Those are all already required. So we're back only to that one part.
Yeah.
Right.
That first phrase.
That first phrase, which has been the kicker all along. So if, if we're in agreement that what Title 27 is, well, I don't know about subdivision rates, because it's a separate section, but, so then maybe we can focus in on that and get it moving quicker and satisfy both masters.
So I'll get some samples from Ray, and see if we can have something back in two weeks.
General shape, size.
That'll be more comprehensive, and, and lay out some clearer standards.
Okay. And that first sentence really is an evolution of the comprehensive plan. I mean, we talked about the bees, sheds, et cetera.
But everything else is already in place.
Yes.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous for my committee?
Yeah, well, I was talking with Debbie, or no, with Amy, and Amy and I were discussing parking. You want to do it under your committee, Amy?
Why not move on to the next committee?
Okay, you're going to do it under yours?
If I'm allowed to have a committee tonight.
Any other, any other miscellaneous for finding a development? We're adjourned.
You know, I would like to interject something here, all joking aside, and this is after a phone call from a unnamed senior council member this week, talking about the length of committees, and how we possibly should take a look at having committees meet on alternate committee weeks. Because here we are, 10 minutes till 9:00, and we still have on our agenda hang tags, parking, and Halloween. All of which can go on for hours and hours, and, you know...
And they have.
And has, many, many times. So I do think, at least, next term, we will take a look at a committee structure rotation kind of thing, too.
Next term? How about next, next week?
That means you can't have a meeting next time.
Yeah.
Different days.
I like having them on different days.
And I have no trouble with that. You know, there have been times in the past that committees...
You know, there have been times in the past that committees would meet at noon the next day for an hour, hour and a half. There are other legislative bodies that do assign a certain amount of time to each subject, which is not a bad idea. But with all that said, transportation committee.
Great, thank you. Well, we promise to be the quickest committee. First item on our agenda is the 24-hour parking regulation that we've heard a lot about, or at least I've been exposed to hearing a lot about over the last year and a half. I think what we're dealing with in as far as the 24-hour parking regulation is not necessarily the enforcement because I think the idea behind the 24-hour parking regulation, which is to prevent storage parking, is a good one. Keeps the, you know, traffic and parking flowing on the streets. But I think that one of the issues in hearing a lot of the complaints is that a lot of people don't have parking for, for their houses, for where they live. There isn't off-street parking. So, you know, needing to park their car for more than 24 hours at a time as we want to, you know, essentially promote more walking as opposed to driving. I think that we need to look into doing something more in providing parking for these people on the part of the landlords. And meeting with some people from administration, from the city, we've discussed requiring that landlords who do not have adequate off-street parking possibly be responsible for purchasing spots at, you know, off-site parking locations and having so many number of parking spots correspond to the number of renters they have for their property. This was, I just want to say a couple more things. This was brought up, Andy Stone, who went to Ohio State University. What they had there was a lot of students parked off at an off-site location. They left their car there and there was a transit system that would run at certain hours that would pick the students up and take them wherever they needed to go. There was also a phone located there, so if you were down there and the next bus wasn't coming for another, you know, 20, 30 minutes, you could call like a van or something that could quickly come and get you and take you to where you needed to go, back to your house or to school or whoever it would be. So, and just, you know, preliminary discussions with trying to combat this 24-hour parking issue where people are being required to move their car every 24 hours. That was just one of the ideas that popped up that I would like to look further into as the transportation committee chair. Paul?
So, really what you're talking about is remote parking? Is that the case?
Right, yes. Off, off-site parking, remote parking.
Okay, some, if I, memory's correct, R1s and R2s really can't have parking lots. So, anybody in an R1 or R2 zone would have to go to like the fairgrounds.
Right.
Okay. And we'd need a bus system to, to transport them.
Right.
Okay.
And right now, the bus system is, is it, could it accommodate this additional?
Not at the moment.
Because we were paying, what, $10 a ride roughly? When it gets down, with subsidy?
Oh, I can't answer that.
Okay. Well, what, another simpler and more preliminary thing would be to require the landlords to include the parking in the rent when it, when they're required to provide it. I guess that's a revolutionary concept, but if you're required by law to provide three spaces for three tenants in three bedrooms, then I think some landlords have gotten in the habit of charging an extra $100 a month for the privilege of parking in that spot. And it seems like it's a disconnect between what our intention is, that we would have off-street parking for all new developments and, and I'd like to pursue that with the law director. Maybe I'll send him a note since he did so well for me this time. A noise.
You're saying have, I'm, I'm not following...
If you are required to have three spaces, then they're available to the tenants.
Where?
At, that live in the house. I mean, because what people are doing is renting those out to somebody else.
And renting their garages to someone else.
I see. Require them to...
Yes.
People that actually live there, what a concept.
Right, yeah.
No, it's very common. And then they'll have, well, you can park down there.
Well, thankfully, I have off-street parking with my fabulous landlord.
But you live a long way, too.
That's true. But I walk sometime. Um, so, just something that I wanted to preserve, pursue further because I think that the issue isn't so much about, you know, the 24-hour regulation because I think that that's appropriate, but it's the fact that people who are renting from these grandfathered-in properties or what have you don't have parking. So, and it's not, and I don't think it's, I don't know if it's unreasonable to ask them to move their car every 24 hours, but certainly unreasonable for them not to have a parking spot at their house or something that is an accommodation, you know, location.
Or to have some down-the-street parking in the spot behind their house because they paid the money.
Right. Paul?
So, is this in lieu of a parking tag, hang tag system or...
Yes. I was just trying to explore other options because I guess I, I wasn't hearing too many positive things about the parking hang tag being brought up again and discussed further. So, this was just kind of another option, I guess, in discussing both hang tags and remote parking.
Okay. Most of, most people I talk to on my end of town with, with respect to the hang tag or 24-hour parking, many of them are full-time residents. It's the ones on Brown and First Street and Hanlon in particular that I'm aware of.
Central.
Central, yes. And therefore, you know, this is not something where as a, as a resident, they've had the house for so many years, they, they want to be able to walk to work. But now you're talking about they'd have to park their car remotely and catch a bus from the fairgrounds to Central Avenue. Will we have a bus system that will go to Central Avenue and Brown and Hanlon or...
Well, I mean, this is, this is something that's, I mean, it's going to be very comprehensive. You know, if we do do the off-site parking, then we will have to work with the busing system and figure out if it's going to accommodate, you know, certain areas. We'll have to figure out which areas of the city are going to be required to purchase or have these off-site locations where there's more of a need, I guess. I mean, it's something that I'm just going to have to work with as far as the geographical locations.
Okay. I would kind of lean towards more towards a hang tag system in general, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, we can explore these simultaneously and see, just to give options.
The other aspect of a remote parking situation is security on that remote parking situation in place because, you know, now you have, you know, X amount of cars there just sitting there all by themselves and whatever goodies are in it. So, that's another aspect.
That's the same as parking one street over, though. I mean, there's no security that way either.
True.
Is there?
No.
You pay your money or take your chance.
But in theory, somebody's messing with your car on your house or in front, on your block, somebody might...
One block over, two blocks over, you have no protection either.
And I also, in way of exploring these options and doing more research and just getting more feedback, I wanted to hold a separate meeting about the parking. I sent an email to council today and in looking at the calendar, next Wednesday at 6:00.
I answered you, I couldn't come then.
I can't come then either.
Tuesday, 6:00.
Tuesday is a good possibility.
All right, Tuesday at 6:00.
That would be the...
Both of my committee members can make it. That's going to be the 19th.
19th. 6:00, okay.
In the conference room downstairs. So, first floor, mayor's conference room, June 19th at 6:00. Parking, meeting, conversation, open to everybody, public, press, whoever. Parking, people. Yes.
There are no, as you're talking about this, if we have to add additional personnel, those would be paid for by the proceeds from whatever program you devise. So, therefore, the talk about how much it'll cost would be premature at this point. Is that correct?
I would say so.
Okay.
I don't want to hear somebody saying $25 for a ticket seems about right because I don't know that that's true.
Right.
A ticket to...
I mean, a parking tag.
A hang tag?
Yeah.
Although, in theory, if you're patrolling right now for 24-hour parking, you've got somebody out there already checking the tags.
Questionable, and if you keep doing it. And if you can do it, like, is it only going to be parking between 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 at night?
The hang tag system?
Yeah. We know, sir.
I thought this was to get rid of 24-hour moving. So, you'd have it there for 24 hours.
I don't know. I could...
Okay.
So, again, we'll have another meeting, what is that, next week on Tuesday, 6:00?
You'll announce it, I consider.
On Monday of next week, yes.
Of course.
Also, in regards to the 24-hour parking regulation, I can't remember how this came up. It was a letter to the editor or an email or what, but it was about dealing with excluding the enforcement of the 24-hour on days when the Athens City schools are closed due to snow or inclement weather. I suppose I would need to talk to Gary as to how we would put language like that into the code, but do council members have a problem with that being a part of the enforcement of the 24-hour or lack thereof enforcement on the 24-hour rule?
If it's not legal to drive.
Right.
Right, yeah. If, you know, there's...
If it's not legal to drive, but if the schools are closed, there's a big difference between legal to drive and schools being closed.
Do we want to do it more on like, more of like a, the snow emergency that's determined by the sheriff?
But what if we wanted to plow the streets, something like that? We'd have to put snow emergency.
Which we've done that before. We could have that as a separate thing.
I don't know.
When the service safety director has to get the street cleared, we've done that.
Yeah.
What are you saying about with the, what?
Well, I mean, if city schools are closed, it's not necessarily a huge emergency. Sometimes you can see the pavement.
Sometimes it's raining.
So, okay, well, right.
Sometimes it's nothing.
All right, moving past that, maybe then moving, working with the level, one of the emergency levels that, okay.
That would be fine.
I think level three is the only one where we can't drive.
Well, level two is only if it's an, I thought level two was, only drive if it's an emergency. Level three is, don't even think about getting your car.
So, you're saying level two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would suggest level two. But I'll, I'll check with and see what is determined upon level two.
Did you check how many times last year we would have been on level two?
Yeah.
And the year before, just a general, you know, I mean, sure, I mean, non.
Not a big deal.
Yes, sure.
Okay, I'll do that and then have something and talk to Gary as far as how that would be worded and everything. Okay.
We've worn down Chris.
The, the rest of my committee will be turned over to member Patterson.
So, you've left me eight minutes for two items. Okay. Bicycle racks. This is just an update of what's going on. Melissa did get some information about various bicycle, bike racks. I'll pass around this one just to show you the picture because it looks like skis to me. But anyway, the bike racks would cost less than $1,000 each, and that's for a rack that holds two or in some cases, three bicycles. These would be for the front of our buses only because the back on the smaller buses at least are emergency exits. The cost would count towards our in-kind transportation grant contribution. And what I would like to do is pass, I passed a packet on to Amy for the bicycle subcommittee to look at and comment on what they would like to see in terms of the type of rack and come back to us with that. The second element of this is that in most cities that have bicycle racks on their buses, they have written policies as well. And that's to cover such things as the biker is required to load their own bike, the, the bus driver is under no circumstances to load the bike for them and, and remove it as well. And...
Liability, I think, right? Liability is who's...
Liability and all of that sort of thing. Melissa has actually emailed me some sample policies, which I also I'll forward to you. And they will go to the bicycle people as well. Because to cover all of our buses would be under $6,000, we don't really need an appropriation ordinance, but I wanted to know if council has any problems with any of this or, you know, what you would like to see as it comes back to us. Any comments? And Paul, do you remember anything else that was said?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is that we did want to get some feedback from the bike subcommittee as well as the bus McDonald's.
Right.
In case they knew of some better system.
Yeah.
That would fit the buses.
And McDonald's, right.
But it sounded a free minimal cost and it would be, we're starting off real slow. I mean, just two bikes per bus really, but it'd be helpful.
Well, it has three, Ray.
Well, one is three.
Yeah, one of these has three. It's the $900 model.
Yeah.
And then by the time you get the hardware on it...
Installation would be within either with us, I guess.
Right.
And Melissa did a lot of the legwork on this, I think, in terms of ritual and stuff.
She did indeed on both policies and the racks. Any objections to having this happen? Okay. That's taken care of. Next, parking garage hang tags. This was something that, that came from the Uptown business people to, and especially from our point of view, to keep them from parking in front of their own establishments and taking some of those precious parking places that their customers might take. This was a discussion to utilize the upper floors, and it would be for the most part the fourth and fifth floors, for a hang tag that is just, if you can find a space, you can park there. It is not a reserved space and it is only for the upper floors. And what we've been talking about, and actually the assistant service safety director, Paula, is working on this to find out the number that she would recommend in terms of how many spaces would we allow to be rented in this way if we decide to do it? And what would be, you know, not infringe on our regular traffic. The cost that's been bantered around a bit for the, the business person would be $60. Our rental for reserved spots is 85.
Per month.
And so, that's why the 60 made some level of sense. Paula is going to go to the AAUBA meeting on Wednesday morning and get their general feedback on this and how many of those businesses think they might take advantage of this. And the other thing that we talked about was that it be done on six-month increments. A whole year would be kind of pricey to the business owner all at once, so the six months made some level of sense there. Once, once a month is a lot of bookwork and, and that sort of thing. Paula is also looking at the cost of the hang tags for that and administration of it so we would have some idea. The theory is that we would be using some spaces that are not always used, and so it would be a plus financially. And if it would facilitate the Uptown businesses to have either the owner or a manager or some of their workers parking at the garage instead of on the street, then that would be all good. Comments? Jim?
So, you said this wouldn't be a reserved space, it'd be kind of a...
Hunter's license.
Hunter's license. But if there were 65 spaces available, we'd only sell 65?
Right, right. We're not going to oversell.
We're not going to double it.
Like some people do.
You're like an airline or something, okay.
Right. That's the concept. Debbie?
And is the idea that, you know, a business owner would purchase some number of these, like two of them, and whichever employees were on that shift to come in, grab the tag and, and use it? So, it wouldn't have to be one particular employee gets a parking tag.
Exactly.
It would be a tag for that business's employees.
And as Jim pointed out, if it were one particular employee, then that becomes a, an issue of that's part of their salary, that's a perk, and they would pay payroll tax on that. So, it's better for them not to have it on the individual.
How much are Hunter's licenses currently in our garage or don't we have any anymore?
We don't have any.
What?
We don't have any.
We don't have any anymore?
We're used to.
We have ours, the city has some.
No, we haven't. How much are...
We still have some that are, are left over from the old program.
Okay, and how much are those? Okay, and how much are those?
They're eighty-five.
So it's the same as the reserve amount?
That's why they slowly. You went a little way.
They're first in line for the reserve slots when they open.
Yeah.
I remember Sarah Hendrick saying that people watch the obituaries to see when a reserved spot would come open and the hunters would go after them.
Do you know how many of those are still out there?
Uh, I'm trying to remember. I think, I think Paula gave me some information. Non-reserves, we still have nine left.
So how can we justify charging them more and the others?
Floors, different floors.
We just roll it all into the new, whatever, whatever new program you decide.
And I, I'm not emphatic on the price. It was just part of the discussion. It seemed to make some level of sense that it be less than the reserved parking.
Well, I guess in my last comment, I'd like to know how many people are actually interested in this because I know sometimes when you're in there, it's very crowded. If there's a court trial and it could actually create problems uptown, I think with, of course, we're talking about twenty-four hours, sixty dollars.
No, actually, during the business time.
Yeah, it's just a daytime hours.
So that's when the court's in session too long.
But that's what we wanted numbers for, so we could find out how much capacity is in the parking garage. Part of the discussion was, okay, how much is getting used most of the time? The data must be.
It's not a good time to be looking at that, is it?
Right now? No, but, but we can check the meters. I assume the meters have a record.
Cindy and Hendrick are out to do a survey.
Okay, other questions? Amy?
I guess I have a question in terms of the price, sixty dollars a month.
Yes.
So, I don't know, just the way the math works out. So we'll say thirty days in a month, that's only two dollars a day. People who pay to park in the garage, that's only two hours. I don't know, I just.
That's daytime.
Yeah, it's a real deal.
It's a real deal.
It is a deal.
Yeah.
But this is part of the discussion, is how to help the Uptown business people.
Right.
This is also part of the discussion of how to get the, to move the cars off to Court Street for parking.
I think that's a.
Well, assuming that his employees are parking at a meter and slugging the meter, but I don't think that.
How many eight hours, how many people it makes seven hours?
So it'd be four hours for two dollars. I made it in political science, not math.
And part of the logic is that they wouldn't be in use all the time. I mean, all of those people are not going to be in those places all of the time.
So they're essentially getting like a fifty percent discount. I'm bad at math, that's what we determine. So they're getting like a fifty percent discount. I guess that's, that's a little more fair.
Can we check with Uptown merchants and see how many are actually interested in this?
Well, considering that they were up in arms with the meters being increased, I imagine they have a need for them.
Free parking thereafter, not paid parking. Come on, everybody wants free parking, not paid parking.
Well, but they are paying on the street now. When they're parking in front of their establishment, they are paying the meter price. Paul, did you have another comment?
No.
You'd have to have been working on Court Street for six years to understand how they play the system.
So is there anybody that thinks this is just in general a terrible idea before we go to the.
Up the price and find out what the demand is.
Well, that's why Paul's going to AUBA on Wednesday to ask them, you know, if they're earnestly interested. And, you know, Larry Payne also can kind of poll them and see who might be actually interested in paying the money and getting the hang tags.
Is this, this is for certain floors? And did I miss that?
Yes.
Which floors?
Upper floors.
Just fourth and fifth?
And possibly some on six, but six is seasonal, the upper.
Yeah, usually we, we keep the sixth floor chained off unless we see that the, you know, that the parking garage is going, is going to become loaded.
Now, lower six is still covered, right? Isn't there a lower six? No.
No, that's upper five.
Upper five, okay.
No, upper six.
Well, because sometimes that's roped up as well. Upper, isn't upper five sometimes roped up?
No. No, when you get to the upper five, you can't go up the ramp to the lighted top floor. The top two levels.
I guess I'm going to have to drive up there.
Yeah, our upper and lowers, upper and lower six get chained off.
And both are open air?
Both are open air.
So Ray.
Okay, I, I remember now, yeah.
Do you have any data on how much use is on the fourth floor and the fifth floor? I mean, you must, the meters get filled up. As soon as a change, amount of change per meter that you have records of, so.
Generally, the fourth and fifth floor are usually employee parking. And four lower and five lower are usually pretty much full. And four upper and five upper are empty because you have to walk down steps to get to the elevator from the upper level. So they park on four lower and five lower because that's the elevator level.
Okay.
So there's basically one floor of employee parking.
That's quite a bit. And so how much you think, do you think we could afford to turn into like this business hang tag stuff?
Yeah, whatever you would do, I would suggest it would be, be done for a short trial period.
Okay.
Because what you're trying, yeah, what, what may happen is that some of your meter parking customers may convert to the tag. So you lose some of your meter parking customers to the tag program. But at the same time, you'll pick up customers who would park elsewhere and come in, but you don't know which is going to offset the other.
And we reduce the rates on the parking garage as well, so that's going to be changed.
Yes, so there's a reduction in revenue there to start with.
Or increase in people going in.
Right, but if, if, if it's a dollar an hour or fifty cents an hour, is it right? Eighty hours is four dollars a day, so. Eighty, you know, twenty, twenty-one working days in a month, so. That's why the eighty-five is just about the max. But I would also think that there are other parking areas that business people uptown park in. And you ought to look and see what they're charging.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I have one miscellaneous item, just an announcement. On the NINA traffic project, they drafted a report. I'm not sure which members of council got it and which did not. Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Okay. I am going to have the NINA people, Chris Fall and whoever else, come in and talk to council just about what they went through and what they did and their findings, just to sort of brief council on their project. And, and also probably know some things from Andy in the way of what might be happening down there in the area in terms of fixing the traffic problem. So just an announcement that they'll be coming to a committee meeting on a night that's not filled with millions of other things. And anybody else have miscellaneous? We're adjourned.
Finance and personnel. Actually, I just have two things to kind of let council know. Our, we'll be coming up Monday's meeting, Community Corrections Act grant. We actually have an ordinance up for second reading next Sun, next Monday. And I had informed you that we'd be asking to suspend the rules because it's a community corrections grant that runs from July to July, so we need to have it in place by, by the first of July. Well, we just the other day got a request from municipal court asking for an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute this grant just as we asked the mayor to execute the, um, DARE grant and homeless shelter grants. So, so we're going to be putting up an ordinance which authorizes the mayor to execute a Community Corrections Act grant through the Department of Rehabilitation and Correct, and Correction. And it's the very same grant that we've been talking about that the court has gotten each year for several years. We didn't do this last year, but we did do it the two thousand and three, two thousand and four year, so. It just, we're responding to a request from the court.
Okay.
The other thing that will be up.
Jim?
Excuse me?
I have a miscellaneous when you.
Okay, the other thing that will be up, the, as you see, RCR, a closure plan, that's a drainwell closure plan, which to date we have spent over four hundred thousand dollars in testing and engineering and fines, et cetera. Interestingly, the last time we passed an ordinance authorizing any expenditures was February of two thousand and two. And that allowed, what, twenty-five thousand?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand. Since then, we've gotten up to four hundred and sixteen thousand. So we need to pass a new authorization ordinance. And part of that will be actually past year expenses. Now, I don't know how that happened. It just the, the service safety director discovered when he was paying bills that there was no authorization to pay that bill. So however, we have appropriated the money, so there it was. So this is doing some cleanup, catch-up work. It will be a kind of an omnibus bill.
So we're talking about the difference of about three hundred thousand, is that what you're saying? Or four hundred total?
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five, is that what it is?
Which has happened in the last.
Six years, five years?
Six, five, six years.
Okay. You haven't so much fun?
Those will be coming up. The mayor has miscellaneous.
Right, I need seven thousand dollars in one-twenty. Other admin transaction class three hundred. There's a house that's been condemned. We, they won't tear down, so we're going to have to tear it down and put those persons' tax bills, so. They bid with seven thousand to do it, so that's what I need. What street is that house located on? South Lancaster Street.
Okay. You need that suspended?
No, I've got enough cushion there that we can, but I'll need it before the end of the year, so.
Ah, we can do that.
It's the same transaction class. You already got one going through for twenty-five thousand for the consulting engineer, so I'll just borrow, rate for a while for that.
Okay. Okay, any other miscellaneous? Finance and personnel is adjourned.
Way to go, Jim.
Hey, Arts and Recreation, I'm passing some Vajinkya material around. Sorry, I wrote all over one, which is what I do. I never saw a piece of paper, I didn't write all over. The, the longer piece solving, or taking steps to solve Halloween problems, this is nothing that's new in the whole thing. It's just kind of recapping where we are. The other one, the sample draft, is addressing what might be asked of a manager of Halloween. And I numbered, I would have liked to have seen this in bullets and, and so I just kind of numbered the duties. And that's why I've stuck the little writing. And then down below it says web because the web, a website should be part of the promotion. And the emphasis in this is on it being a community festival that generates revenue, that it has an advisory board, and then it repeats, community friendly. So one of the things I'd like to do is take your suggestions of anything else that might be in that piece. Now, I just wanted to run through what I think we need to do. Vajinkya would like for this to be an ordinance next week and suspend it on the second reading. I think if we are going to fund a program designer for this, it has to be that soon in order for it to be accomplished. The position is recommended for full-time until December, which is five to five and a half months, and then reevaluate at that time for the following year. Figures have been bantied around a bit. I felt that for a five-month period, twelve to sixteen thousand was probably appropriate. I also think that we need to, if we do this, we need to do it with the idea that if we were to continue it, that it should have some part-time element year-round. So maybe the person works ten hours a week, January through, up till, through June, and then hits the, the deck running for the time coming up to Halloween. What we would need in terms of an ordinance for this would be an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract. And then that contract and the, the person hired would be approved by the mayor and the service safety director. I think that we could at the same time establish a resolution that outlines what council wants those goals to be and what we want in the contract. For example, something along the sample draft. So that it's clear what the intentions of that contract would be. Also, the, the establishing of the advisory group would be something that would have to be done pretty darn quickly. And I, I certainly don't think that should be the purview of the person hired. It needs to be a combination of people and, and exactly how that would be done, we would have to decide. Now, supervision of the contract, this is something that's been bantied about a bit. Ray Haslett is here for the reason that this is being discussed. And he has said that he would be willing to be responsible from the city side of it to say, yes, this particular aspect would work within our goals and what we want to see happen with Halloween, or no, it would not. Especially from a safety standpoint and from a human resources within the city standpoint. As I've said many times before, the city from a, a employee standpoint is pretty well maxed out on Halloween. And so we have to guard against additional responsibilities on the, the part of the city staff. Some of the things that I thought that we should be concerned about is costs of the plan to implement it. I mean, it's going to cost more than the person that's making the plans. They're going to have to, you know, have some money to spend in that process. A possible concern would be city employees concerned with volunteerism doing some of, of the work. What would be our level of willingness to have the city support such things as copies being made in-house? If it came to some new activity that might have to be, that have increased security, is that something we're willing to do or not? Another thing that I've talked about with Ray and the mayor is where would this money come from? It would come out of the general fund and go through either tourism, economic development, or Athens enhancement, wherever we felt was appropriate. The goals of this are to change the image of Halloween, to make it family-friendly and a community event. But one of the things it is not is to make it larger, especially initially. It's been recommended that the sponsors and sponsorship is one of the techniques that has been suggested to raise money, that the sponsors be non-alcohol related, that they be a more community sort of thing, and that they not, a sponsor not run regional-wide ads trying to increase the number of people coming to Athens. At the same time, we have not yet passed a street closing ordinance. The ordinance that we had previously for, that included the possibility of the fence was very open-ended. I actually have a copy of that. I can pass it around. It didn't give specific times and it is pretty inclusive in terms of what's closed. So take a look at this and see if this would be okay. And then my final question would be, do we want to make any changes to the vending ordinance? And then before we ask questions and toss ideas into the pot, I'd like to know if Ray would like to add anything from that. I just said a lot.
No, at this point, basically, I, I had a few conversations with Carol and with Vajinkya. You know, and as with any plan that the city council would decide to put in place, naturally, we're going to support it. You know, the idea of trying to shift Halloween to a more positive image and a, and a family-friendly image. One of the difficulties we'll have is it's already juxtaposed to what the existing celebration is. So we're trying to change that image. So in the process, we're going to have to maintain the safety concerns that we've, that we've already. that we've already been through in the past, to make certain that we don't create crowd-density issues and that we maintain crowd flow and those kinds of things. And at the same time, we want to look at something new and different and more family-friendly, so we are gonna have to work very carefully to make sure that those things are implemented in a safe fashion. Because we don't want to have it backfire on us to create a safety issue when we're trying to make it more family-friendly. One of the things that I'd also discuss with Bajinka was the concern that if we, at this point in time, made a concerted effort to increase the numbers of people coming to the city, we do not have the capability to deal with that kind of... Let's assume we want to add another 10,000 or 15,000 people. Right now, we don't have the capabilities to deal with that. And that's something that can be developed, but we don't want it to overtake us without us being prepared to deal with it. One good example is, like, the Boogie on the Bricks has started out as a community-initiated festival. They put together the plans, they put together the financing, they've reviewed security plans with the city. And it's growing and creating its own image. It doesn't have to compete with an existing celebration. It is its own celebration. And it's projecting a positive image. And as it grows, if it would get to the size of Halloween, it would be a positive event, and it would be a community-supported event, because it started that way. So what we're trying to do is take Halloween and put a new twist to it. So we're more than willing to try to do that, because up to this point, all we've tried to do is manage the safety issues. It'd be nice if we had a different type of celebration that we could approach in a different fashion, so...
Okay. All right. Have at it. I'll write down everything you say. Go from there. What do you like, what do you not like, whatever. Jim?
Well, I'm, I think I said in an earlier discussion that I'm not aware of a community-swelling support for us hiring someone. But on the other hand, having listened to Paige and listening to the students from Bajinka's classes, if, and now the service safety director, if we're gonna change Halloween, it needs someone to take charge of it, and we're not gonna do it, so that means hiring someone. But my question about hiring is if we introduce this for first reading next week, then suspend the first meeting in July, then by the earliest that somebody would be on board would be early August. Can we really expect someone to do anything by September? August and September, October? Or are we looking at next year?
Well, the plan is to look at this year, but if nobody applies, or, you know, we don't have somebody that says, oh, I can do this by October, I can at least get a start on it for this year, with the idea that it would show what it would look like for the future. And that's kind of what I've heard from people that at least have toyed with the idea of applying. That, you know, sure, I'll give it a shot. What'd you pass us?
I did. It's somebody who's been thinking about trying to organize something like this. I don't know if you've talked to the gentleman.
I have this as well, and yes, he did email this to me.
So this is basically your sponsorship breakdown for Key West, I think, Fantasy Fest? I think the price is a little bit different than what we'd have, but...
Well, and it's a nine-day festival.
Yes, it is.
We're not quite ready for that.
But this kind of dovetails with what Jonathan Holmberg was talking about in terms of VIP-type wrist tag type thing, or type of standards for if you buy into something like this. Personally, I want to see something tried with Halloween, so I'm willing to give this a shot. It sounds like the chain of command would be Ray, would be doing safety stuff on the city part, and if you, who else would be involved?
Actually, I didn't quite finish that line of thought. Tourism, Paige has said that she would, would or would not, whatever council wants, take some responsibility in terms of helping the person, and that tourism will house them so they could have an office at the tourism office. And she said if she didn't do anything else, that she could still provide that space if we didn't want her directly involved with helping the person organize.
Okay.
It's our space, and they're renting it for a dollar a year. It's a deal.
What a deal. And I know that when Scope of Services, last year, the year before, we put Chamber involved in this, as well as tourism. I assume Chamber would be involved in this?
I would hope.
And they'd be on the advisory, or?
Yes, yes. That was part of the model, have tourism, Chamber, somebody from the city, and so on, on that advisory committee, and really in that proposal from the business class. It was a nice organizational chart for that, and very usable. And so we could just adopt that. It's got like a business person in, you know, all the different levels. Debbie?
I...
Nope, sorry?
He's not on you. Go ahead.
I did talk to Bajinka sometime on the past week, and, you know, this is pretty much what she was saying to me, too. And as I say, I would not, you know, be against trying to do something like this, or at least try something different.
Debbie?
The question about the contracts is one of my big issues with this, that both the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitors Bureau have in their Scope of Services to work with a citizen group that will undertake this effort, which is another way to approach it, besides us paying someone to do this. And there's a bunch of stuff written in here about how you can't expect volunteers to do this, who have jobs and other responsibilities. But I believe that Community Festival in Columbus, which tens of thousands of people attend, Boogie on the Bricks, the Pumpkin Festival, and, you know, the International Street Fair, and lots of other festivals are organized by groups of people that we're not paying, or that cities aren't paying to do that. Community Festival actually raises enough money that they pay the city of Columbus $36,000 for off-duty police officers to provide security. They pay for porta-potties, they clean everything up, they take care of all of that. And they've raised additional money, so they've made contributions to the Victorian Village Association, and they've made improvements to Goodell Park where the festival happens. So that's a totally volunteer effort, and people have organized that and do the work of it, and have meetings year-round for that festival. And it looks to me like it provides benefits to the city of Columbus rather than being an expense. But the city of Columbus doesn't own the event and doesn't spend money to, you know, make it happen, or make it happen safely. They just say, in order to get your permits, you have to pay however many off-duty police officers we tell you. And you have to clean up after yourselves and have porta-potties. And, you know, the fire department has somebody come through and inspect all the tents, and, you know, any expenses that the city incurs, the festival pays for. So I think that it's totally possible for volunteers to run a really big, complicated festival. And I believe that we told two entities in their contract that you shall do this. So we've already paid them to organize a citizen group to do this. And I haven't heard anybody saying to me that they want the city to spend more money on Halloween, or to own Halloween, other than, you know, Paige coming and providing that report saying that we should own Halloween. I haven't, no constituents have told me that they want us to do this. So I have a lot of concerns about it.
I have concerns about tourism and the Chamber being asked to do the level that you're talking about. There's a big difference in working with a committee, which they would do with this process. They would work with the organizational committee. And it becoming a major part of their contracts, and that's the service that we get. Okay, you have Halloween, that's it. There's no way, and as the tourism people have pointed out repeatedly, they are not planners, they are promoters. And they're willing to do that part of it, and very anxious to help in any way they can, but not be the volunteers that run the thing. Now, one of our problems is that we already have this creature called Halloween, and we're trying to organize it after the fact. It makes it a bit different than a community-born project that, like Boogie on the Bricks, that comes from an effort within the community for an event that they would like to have. I think they're two very different animals. From my personal standpoint, council can support this or not support this, but I don't see it just happening for free. I just don't. Amy, anything?
I just want to reemphasize just that student senate, student body is involved with whatever decisions are being made. I mean, I don't necessarily think that this is a bad idea. I'm kind of on the same page that Paul is, and just wanting to try something, but at what cost? I don't know. And I'm also, you know, with Debbie on the Confest, and I've been up there for the past three years. And the amount of people that they bring out to that festival, just the kind of things that they have going on, is something that I'd really like to see our Halloween turn into, because I think it's a great event. You know, it's very community and family-oriented and well-structured. So I think that that's something that we seriously should look into as to how they operate within their budget and constraints and whatever else.
How old is Confest?
It's more than 25 years old, and the guy who runs the beer booth lives in Athens County and is totally willing to help us. So, the other thing you mentioned that I would say is if it looks like we're going down this road, I don't, at this point, support this particular proposal. But if this is what moves forward, you mentioned that the money would come out of general revenue fund, and I would strongly oppose that. I think that, you know, it should come out of tourism. If we're talking about dealing with a particular event.
It is a tourism event.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Other comments? What about, Paul put on the ordinance for the street closing, and we discussed this previously. Do we want to extend it all the way to Mulberry instead of Preston Street? And Ray pointed out to us that if it said Mulberry, that we could use whatever portion then we felt was appropriate, and if we wouldn't have to go down to Mulberry. But essentially, it's closed there anyway, right?
Basically, when you close South Court between President and Union, you effectively close South Court from President to Mulberry anyway.
Right. So I certainly am happy to change the wording in this to indicate that, because in practicality, that's what will happen anyway. And it was deliberate that we put no times in.
Part of my rationale of putting it down Mulberry is that we could... Over the years, we've kind of stuck to the same places where the stages are. And I know that the epicenter of the university has moved down south. I know in previous times from sitting in council that we've had problems with the stand being one place too long and affecting the local businesses where they are, in particular one with between State and Carpenter at the time. I'm just looking to try and mix this up and have some kind of difference. Part of the thing is I find, again, this needs to change somehow. I'm not enamored with spending more money for it, but if it's necessary to have it safe or change it, and I know Bajinka's been pushing for getting a, you know, Halloween czar or something. This is an opportunity to try that for at least once or twice, or whatever it takes. So that's really why I'm just trying to change it, and it's up to administration how to enact this, really.
Sure. Debbie? One other thought, some fundraising contracts have like a base pay amount and an incentive pay amount.
Right.
I would be, I might be a little bit more open to this if the fact that this person is going out and getting sponsorships and getting donations, if there's something that they get maybe some base pay amount, and then another level of pay if they bring in enough money to cover X expense that we face.
We actually have a model for that type of contract.
To structure it in some way, that that person's actually bringing money in that more than pays for themselves.
Right. Ray?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we didn't mention, that as I understood the discussion, and even from my own perspective in being involved in these kind of things as a volunteer chairperson, this person, whoever this person would be that would be hired, actually would be gathering together a committee of persons from the community in order to control this whole thing. I mean, one person can't organize and prepare for and execute any kind of celebration by themselves. This person would probably have to have at least a 10-person committee to execute different portions of a plan. So you have to have a person who knows how to put together that kind of a staff and execute that kind of a plan. So the idea then would be you'd have people from other community organizations involved in that management executive committee, whatever, who report to that person. And that way, you'd have something that would, you know, a group that would be responsible for organizing and executing. And then basically, all our function would be, is to, as you say, you need how many security people, and here's how much it's going to cost you to execute that. So that would be the idea, to work towards that, turning it over, if you will, to an events committee.
And if an events committee worked, and revenue came into the city and paid for some of these things, to me, it's fairly irrelevant whether that initial person is paid or unpaid. It'd be nice if they were unpaid, but I've not seen anyone come forward and say, I would like to organize Halloween, get the sponsors, take all the responsibility, and please don't pay me. But I've not seen that person yet, so... Okay, I'll attempt to put something together for next Monday then. And no changes on the vending?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Could you remind me what the fees are again, what the vending fees are?
It's 500. I'll have to pull it out. I don't have it with me.
500 for the one time, and?
It's 500 for the out-of-town vendors, so... And I, to me, that vending is one very underutilized area. And a good manager should be able to get far more vendors than we have now. And that should be a good boost for this one. Okay. Chair?
Okay. Environment Committee, there's a miscellaneous, really. Did all of you get the email from Gary Hunter about the wording for the gutter, 18 inches off the gutter? Can you maintain that? I don't know if it's ready for ordinance level yet. Here's some copies if you want some. Pretty much, he pulled off what we had from the New York reference there. I'm not su... He does have a definition of the gutter area, which is 18 inches, which I think is good. Did I give you enough there? Okay. He actually has a section in there which is duplication of the New York thing, where the routing, in terms of where the, when the violation's going to occur. But that means that we'll have to get some cleaning daily between certain times. I want you to look at this and think if we want to put this...
What?
Nothing. I don't know what devil strips are.
Devil strips? Where's that?
Devil? Devil? Devil?
Devil strips. I don't know what devil strips are either.
Sounds interesting.
Ray?
It's ready for Halloween.
It's a New York term, I guess.
Yeah. We'll have to look that up. So it's obviously not ready, since we don't want to put devil strips on our areas at this point. Could be the strips in between the roads, landscaping islands.
Tree pits, grass strips.
I shall find out. But as I say, I'm not sure if it's ready to play yet, but I just want to make you aware that it's gone through. that it's gone through the law director's purview. Go ahead.
When we first talked about this, I was envisioning Court Street particularly, where there's always cars parked there, and how am I going to clean out 18 inches into the gutter when there are cars parked? Difficult.
Do it at 4:00 in the morning.
Well, the cars, what's the time the cars have to be?
Four to six, I think.
Four to six.
Four to six.
Usually not many cars out there until eight anyway.
Yeah.
Usually, three days, at least, we're running the streets with Court Street.
Yeah.
We're getting to that curb area.
Still seems pretty trashy most of the time, that's the problem.
I think the main thing that you want to, you know, the main thing you want to do, though, is that sentence that says they will put it in a suitable container, not the litter containers that are on the sidewalk and not into the gutter. And that's really what's happening. I've seen people put it in the sweep pans, but I've also seen people just push that, wow, they'll get it tomorrow.
Okay. So you want to change that wording?
No, I'm just saying that the wording is such that.
It's sorry.
It says picked up and deposited in suitable containers for collection. Well, right now, ours doesn't talk about how you sweep the sidewalk. I mean, it's people, some people sweep the sidewalk into the street, just like they do with snow, which is, another section of our ordinances says you aren't allowed to put the snow when you shovel your sidewalk into the street. Same thing with grass clippings, when you mow your grass, you're not supposed to put them into the street because they get in the storm drains. Then we have to plow the street into the snow, so.
Okay, so you're talking about enforcement issues at this point, right?
Well, I mean, it's just, Jim's right, when a car is parked there, it's going to be hard to get small items of litter out. And most bottles and cans gets crushed by the cars, but it is an attempt to try to make it cleaner and tell them a way to do it, but it also affects a lot of areas where there's not cars parked.
Okay. I'd say it's not ready for play yet.
Not quite.
But I wanted to make you aware. And I have nothing else, unless somebody else has a miscellaneous.
No. Oh, I have an announcement. I just keep announcing this, on the 19th at 10:00 a.m., we'll head protection information session for businesses at the Community Center.
I thought it was 9:30.
I thought it was 9:30, too.
Okay, let's say 9:30. I don't have my book with me, so I'm not positive. It shouldn't last much more than an hour, 9:30.
Thanks.